First blue.
First blue.
The blue days.
Blue.
Okay, we are on the air, folks. And I want to welcome all of you this evening. I apologize that we don't have enough chairs, but I think some of the folks here are part of the presentations towards the beginning of the agenda. And so if some of you folks are here for the public hearing, there'll be some seats that'll open up. But I apologize for that, but welcome, everyone. Would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary, roll call.
Colson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Callum.
Here.
Cusack.
Here.
Okay, and first on the agenda, we have some special presentations this evening. And one is some Human Relations Awards and Certificates. This is for 2014. This is done annually, and it's kind of a special event in recognizing folks in our community that have contributed a lot of their time and talents. So with that, I think, Kim, are you going to come up with Human Relations? And Chris?
Here.
Do we have a remote?
Stuart, can you have a remote?
I think go bring your remote.
Mayor Canopa and city councilors, let me introduce myself. I'm Chris Equinor. I'm a member of the Human Relations Commission here in Albany, appointed by the City Council. We have also over here Javier Cervantes, Kim Whitley, and Graham Killingsbury, and who will be helping me with the presentations this evening, Debbie Berg. The Human Relations Commission was established in 2007 by the Albany City Council to promote harmonious relations among the citizens of Albany. This is done through recommendations of programs, activities, ordinances, expenditures, and other appropriate government activities to the City Council and to the City Manager. The Human Relations Commission strives for actions that lead to positive and respectful relations in the community. Through focusing on positive community change, the Commission strives to help the City of Albany to be a welcoming and nurturing community. One of the ways that the Commission promotes Albany's strengths is by sponsoring the Human Relations Award. The City of Albany Human Relations Commission recognizes individuals and nonprofit organizations that have worked to promote the ideals of harmonious relations among the citizens of Albany. The first of these awards was given out in January of 2012, and we've given them out ever since. Tonight, awards will be given to two winners, as well as to one runner-up for their demonstrated commitment to promoting human relations, diversity, and equality through community programs and activities in Albany. At this time, Commissioner Member Debbie Berg will announce our award recipients in the individual and nonprofit organization categories. Debbie?
For the nonprofit runner-up, we have the Albany Historic Carousel and Museum. Can I, is there anybody representing that organization?
Wendy Kirby.
Wendy. Wendy Kirby. The City of Albany Human Relations Commission recognizes the Albany Historic Carousel and Museum as a nominee for the 2014 Human Relations Award in honor of all the volunteers working tirelessly to create a carousel complex in downtown Albany, which will draw visitors from around the world and contribute to the economic revitalization of historic downtown Albany. Over 167,000 volunteer hours have been contributed to the success of the carousel and museum, and over 2,000 people tour the museum each month. Thank you, Wendy. Next, we have Jim Lawrence for the individual award. Is Jim here? Jim Lawrence. What came in was Jim Lawrence deserves the Albany Human Relations Award for 2014 because he has spark-plugged the Albany Bicycle Safety Training Program in the Albany Public Schools for at least 10 years. Albany's 4th and 5th grade students now drive public streets while respecting the traffic laws and reducing tension with automobile drivers. Thank you, Jim.
Would you like the safety words?
Yeah, I just want to say that this is not just an award for me. We have hundreds of volunteer hours that we have every month. We will reach, teach about 780 kids every year how to ride their bikes safely on the street. And in every, it's been supported by the city, our city staff, our school district, and many hundreds of community, as well as parental volunteers, to help keep this program going. Otherwise, it couldn't happen. It wasn't just me. There's lots of folks out there that are making this work, and it's making our children safer and makes our streets safer for everybody. Thank you so much.
And now, the winner of the nonprofit organization is Lynn Benton Hispanic Advisory Committee. Can I have you come up? For 20 years, the Lynn Benton Hispanic Advisory Committee has been working to support Hispanic audiences, help professionals working with Hispanic audiences, network and share resources, and promote positive relationships between Hispanic and Latino audiences and the general public. Hack has co-sponsored Festival Latino with the Albany Parks Department for the last decade. This event at Monte Park has highlighted Hispanic cultures and brought people together to celebrate food, dance, music, and children's activities. This event has also been a link between Hispanic people and services in the community, including health screenings. Hack meetings have served as forums to deal with issues in the community that affect Hispanic audiences. For example, in 2009, Hack coordinated a meeting with law enforcement officials to share ways for them to more positively work with Hispanic community members. Hack has met with the Democrat Herald and Gazette Time newspapers to promote positive stories about Hispanic people in the two counties. In 2013, Hack has served as a resource to the English Language and Cultural Institute as they took over the English as a Second Language program from LBCC. This was a critical time when Hispanic people were worried that the English as a Second Language program was being discontinued and when community connections needed to be made for the ELCI. Hack is a key reason that the program is successful and that newer immigrants were able to learn English. The Lynn Benton Hispanic Advisory Committee is the only organization that has been a longtime supporter of positive relations between Hispanic audiences and the general public. Congratulations.
Thanks. I just want to say thanks to the City of Albany and for the Human Relations Commission. We've had a great relationship together. We meet with the Commission about once a year and learn from each other and share ideas and things like that. And I know there's at least, Eugenia's here, we have quite a few people that are here on our commission, our committee, and we just hope that we keep working on having a welcoming community for all people here, and I think we're headed that direction. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, on behalf of the City of Albany, we want to congratulate all of you, and it's just quite an honor to be able to give you this award for all of your time and commitments that you have provided in our community, because that's what makes Albany a great place to live, is everybody being able to help pitch in and help one another, and we greatly appreciate it. So with the carousel, I don't know if Wendy is still back there here or not, but a lot of people don't realize, when it does come to say that human relations, how they're able to touch so many people's lives, when you get thousands of visitors that come in every, every month, you know, that come to see the carousel, and to be able to see all the happy smiles that are put on people's faces, and see the beauty that they portray in our community, it's a very valuable asset. And with Jim Lawrence, he was very humble, folks. I've known Jim for a long time. So when I first met Jim was in this room probably close to 20 years ago, and we were trying to, our first transportation system plan that we were coming up with with the city, and it was a very contentious issue, and it was to be able to have bike lanes in Albany. Well, back then, we didn't have bike lanes in Albany, and it was an issue that people said, "We don't need bike lanes in Albany." And Jim educated me on the importance of bike lanes. I really appreciate it, Jim, because it has really stuck in my mind all these years, really, to make it safe out there for all modes of transportation. And probably one of our first issues we came, had to deal with, with bike lanes was the Hill Street Project years ago. I think Jim remembers that one, and some of us here remember that. We had the room full, and it was a lot of the folks on Hill Street that did not want the street to be reconstructed and did not want bike lanes put on Hill Street. And I remember Jim speaking up about the importance of making it safe, and how can we work with the neighbors, and to be able to get this a good design, to be able to save on-street parking, and to be able to save the, be able to make it safe for pedestrians. I remember one citizen that lived on Hill Street, and he came to the hearing, and he was an elderly gentleman, and he was just, he was a hoot, but he came forward and he said, "I sit outside all day long watching cars going up and down Hill Street," and he says, "There's only one person that rides the bike, and that's the town drunk," he said. And it was like, I'll always remember that. Well, just today, I went down Hill Street, and from Ninth to Queen, I ended up counting six people riding bicycles. So once you make it safe, they come. And Jim knew that was going to happen. He was making it more of a safe transportation system, and he's been very, very supportive over the years of making sure that we have safe streets in Albany, and you put in a good 20 years of that advocating. And also, many times during the school year, I'd be driving around, and I would see Jim with a group of school kids, you know, out teaching them how to ride bikes properly. So, so Jim, we are very grateful for your years of service, and it's kind of a legacy that's going to stay with a lot of people's minds, and really building up that foundation for making our streets a safe place. So thank you so much. Okay, thank you, and thank you so much for the Lynn Benton Hispanic Advisory Committee. You also put on the wonderful Latino event that is very well, and it keeps growing each year, and we're very appreciative of all that hard work that you put in, and making a wonderful event and fun event for people to attend. Okay, all right. Thank you so much for the Human Relations Commission, for all you do, and you're a very active committee, too, we have with the city, so thank you. Okay, let's see, next on the agenda, I think Chief Latanzio wants to come up and give some awards.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and to the citizens that are here today. One of the things, programs that we started last year was we revamped our awards program, and what I wanted to do was to recognize people for outstanding work. And one of the programs we started was an Employee of the Quarter program. So every quarter, we recognize somebody from the Operations Division and somebody from the Support Division for the outstanding work they've done over that three-month period of time. And then we take those people who have received those awards, and plus any new ones we have at the end of the year, and we started a Department Employee of the Year Award, and is to recognize a civilian and a sworn member who throughout the year has consistently displayed exceptional work performance, professionalism, and customer service. So this is the first year for these two awards. So the first person I would like to have to come up here for the Civilian Employee of the Year Award is Anna Kitchen. Anna was nominated by Sergeant Dan Jones, and he wrote up, and I'd like to read a couple of things on his nomination. Anna has faithfully served the detective division for 10 years, under many different supervisors and working with countless investigators. Within every work group, there is a person who oftentimes makes or breaks the unit, and that person is often not the one most visible. Lieutenant Gimini commented, Anna is the grease that keeps the gears moving smoothly. Anna is most certainly the person who keeps endless details from falling through the cracks. Anna remains energetic, detail-oriented, informed, and takes countless tasks that detectives or supervisors need assistance with. The sheer amount of daily tasks that Anna completes are enormous and require from her a great deal of detailed attention and organization, which she appears to accomplish effortlessly. Although most of us complain from time to time about certain aspects of her job, Anna is one not to complain. In fact, we have never heard her complain about anything she has been asked to do over the years, and although Anna is subjected to the daily pressure to consistently prioritize and shuffle her workload, she remains a consistent and positive influence within the work group. Anna is quick to offer assistance, even when it will create more workload for her. Anna deserves to be recognized outside of her work group for the high quality of work she does, in often difficult work environment. For that reason, she's our Civilian Employee of the Year. Congratulations. We would like to present her with the certificate and also with a plaque. The next person we would like to recognize as our sworn employee of the year, I'd like to ask Officer Greg Newman to come up front. Even though Officer Newman has been with the police department for a short time, he has made an immediate impact and lasting impact with enthusiasm, professionalism, work ethic, and positive attitude. Officer Newman was the most productive officer in 2014 and led the department in arrests, reports, and self-initiated activity. He also has an uncanny ability to instantly remember faces, names, and locations, and has assisted numerous other officers identify suspects in open cases that has led to the arrests of previous unknown suspects. Officer Newman is also very active with self-initiated activity and is consistently looking for suspicious persons and making contacts. On 5/2 of 2014, this desire to be active resulted in making contact with an individual who once successfully tried to flee, and was identified as a person wanted for murder, rape, burglary, and burglaries in Albany. This individual is currently in jail and is no longer a threat to our community. He also is able to think outside the box. On 6/2 of 2014, he responded to report a suspicious person who we believe was involved in multiple burglaries. Instead of responding directly to the area, he utilized his mapping system and developed the most likely path of escape and located the suspect. The individual was subsequently convicted and sentenced to 20 months in the Oregon Department of Corrections. These are only a small fraction of the work he has done in the last year, but is consistent with his work performance. Each and every day, he comes to work motivated, energetic, and pursues his job with 100 percent of his abilities, and for that reason, he's our Officer Employee of the Year. Congratulations.
Oh, well, we want to congratulate you and thank you so much for wonderful service. I mean, we have an outstanding police department, and all of us are very proud of the quality of services that they provide in our community to make a safe community. And as you can see, it's not an easy job that they have to perform, so we're very grateful for all your service, and thank you so much, all of the police department. Thank you. All right. Next for scheduled business is the public hearing. And with that, I will call the public hearing open at 7:33 PM. And staff, would you like to do a staff report? Did you want to speak before staff report? Before staff report? Okay, all right. Counselor Collins?
I'd like to make a comment and then a motion that may help tonight and help frame some of the, focusing some of the issues. I would move that tonight's public hearing be continued until April 22nd, but that tonight we hear from the staff presentation and from any citizen wishing to address the council that's here. That further during that extended period, I would request staff to evaluate at a minimum the following. One, what is the result if the LID process is terminated? Two, are there options to improving Crocker, which will involve only the owner developer of Phase 2 and Phase 3, and the city? If so, define what improvements would be constructed and how the existing residents would be impacted. Three, would the projected costs be reduced if Crocker Lane were to be developed using the non-urban design standards versus the urban standards? And four, are there other assessment options to more broadly apportion the assessments beyond the current proposed LID boundaries?
Second. Okay, all right. Motion's been made in a second. Any discussion?
There was, there was a second.
Yeah, yeah, Rich did. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And then Jim.
And I need to be recognized on a procedural matter concerning ex parte communications. As you heard, what's going to happen is, everybody's going to get to testify who wants to testify, just as before, but the council has decided that they will not make a decision tonight, they will not close the hearing tonight, the hearing will be continued to a later date, so the Counselor Collins' questions can be addressed by staff. That will mean that there will be another opportunity for everyone to testify. The reason I mention all of this is that this kind of process is what is called a quasi-judicial process. That means that the council is kind of acting like a panel of judges, rather than acting like a panel of legislators. If you had a case that was going before a judge, you would expect the judge to decide your case based on the evidence at the trial. You wouldn't expect the judge to decide the case based on letters and so forth that you never saw. We know that citizens are very interested in this, and so we know that the council is hearing from citizens, constituents, and getting a lot of letters and a lot of emails. Under the law, since, again, they're like judges, they're supposed to make their decision based on the hearings, but what I'm going to suggest you do is that the councilors provide all email or written communications to a central location. I would suggest, with Mark Shepherd's concurrence, Gordon Stephens Meyer, of the Public Works Staff. So if citizens are going to communicate with the council in email, you can still communicate with your councilors. Your councilors are going to provide those emails to the Public Works Department. The Public Works Department will post on the website where you can look at the emails, so that you can see what other citizens are saying to your judges as well. Now, I would ask that you understand that since the council is in the role of being judges, that you not telephone them or talk to them personally, because that forces them to try to write down what you said, so that they can report it to everyone else. The easiest way to communicate with them would be to write them or email them, and then the councilors can make that information available through a city staff member, and anyone who wants to look at it can then see what they've heard. So I would ask the council, even though this is not land use, to treat it as a quasi-judicial decision. If you've had communications other than emails or writings, disclose those. If not, if your communications have been in written or electronic form, simply provide those to Gordon Stephens Meyer, and he can make them available for everyone. Now, council has continued this matter, did you?
April 22.
To April 22. So please don't send any emails later than about April 20. That way, staff's got a chance to get them all together, and if anybody wants to see what your neighbors have been saying, you've got time to look at them. If you're sending emails right up till the moment of the hearing, we can't do that. So I'd ask the council not to consider communications after the 20th.
Question.
Sir.
We're dealing with only the people who are involved here, or is this anyone who has spoken to us about this?
It should be anyone who has spoken to you about this.
It should be the people that are being asked to pay for them.
Well, I understand your perspective, but under the law, in a, if it's a quasi-judicial hearing where you're in the role of being a judge, the notion would be that the public has a right to expect you to make your decision based on the evidence of the hearing. And the reason, let me just explain, there's nothing wrong, there's nothing wrong with getting quasi-judicial, or I'm sorry, ex parte communications, as long as people who might have a different opinion get a chance to look at them and then respond. For example, if somebody said to the judge trying your case that the plaintiff is a liar, and you didn't, you were the plaintiff, and you didn't know if somebody was saying that about you, you'd at least like to know who was saying it about you and have a chance to come to court and say, "No, I'm wrong, that's wrong, I've been straightforward." So that's all we're talking about here, is a chance for both sides of any issue to know what's been said.
So can we write that out in an email and ship that to?
Yes. If you would prefer to make your disclosures just with a subject, a summary email, you can do that, and the reason you can do that is because since you've already decided you're going to leave the record open, people would have a chance to look at that prior to the next hearing.
Thank you.
And I just want to mention, I did receive several emails and two letters. If any of you are in the room, and if you did receive my reply, I think generally what I stated was, "Thank you, hoping you can attend the meeting." To kind of add to what the city attorney said, the reason I didn't go into any further discussion with you was not to be rude, it was that as a counselor, I'm aware of this requirement, and we should not have one-on-one conversations, because again, as the city attorney pointed out, the only one that gets that information are you and me, and the rest of the people are entitled to hear all of that information. So again, I apologize if you felt like it was a curt response and a lack of communication on my part, but there was a reason for that.
So let me explain the process here. So we normally have a legal-type process that we go through when it comes to these hearings, and so first is what we're going to be doing, is the staff's going to be giving a report. So it'll be giving you a lot of background, too, on how all of this, how everything's transpired from the past up till today. And then from there, if you have signed up on the sheet, I will be calling the first names that are on the sheet for, to testify. But if you didn't get signed up, don't worry, I'll let you, if you can raise your hand later, I'll ask if there's any more, you know, testimony to be brought forward, and you'll still have a chance with that. Okay? So that's the process. So sir, you'll get a chance to speak later. Thank you. Okay, Mark?
So I think we're going to kick off the report with Jeff.
Evening, Mayor, councilors. For the benefit of the audience, my name's Jeff Blaine. I'm an engineer in the Public Works Department. We are obviously here tonight to hold a public hearing for formal, excuse me, for formation of a local improvement district, or what we call an LID. LIDs are intended to be tools that are used to fairly apportion cost to properties benefiting from specified improvements. For this potential LID, we're talking about improving Crocker Lane to city standards from Valley View Drive south approximately 2,100 feet to Meadowwood Drive. In this case, city standards means 11-foot travel lanes, 6-foot bike lanes, 5-foot landscape strips, and a 6-foot sidewalk on each side of the street. With this LID, or proposed LID, we are also considering building a 12-foot wide, excuse me, 10-foot wide multi-use path on the south side of Valley View Drive from Crocker Lane West, 1,100 feet to Hillcrest. Staff report tonight's going to be broken into three parts. I'm going to kick off the discussion and then turn it over to Ron Irish, our Transportation Analyst, to talk about the potential benefits of the improvements, and then Gordon Stephens Meyer, the engineer who's managing this potential LID, will then follow along and talk about the LID specifics. I wanted to start things off tonight by just reviewing how streets typically get built or improved in Albany. So we can have general obligation bonds to fund street projects, like was done back in the '90s to fund 34th Avenue, Elm Street, and a handful of other, other streets. These bonds require residents to vote for a temporary increase in taxes to fund specific improvements. We also have city-funded projects with monies received from the state in lieu of franchise fees, transportation systems development charges, and these projects are typically operations and maintenance-driven projects, like Hill Street or Main Street. They're not always, but typically. We also see county-funded projects to facilitate road transfers from the county to the city, like was done for Grand Prairie Road and Clover Ridge. like was done for Grand Prairie Road and Clover Ridge Road. But the most common way that streets get built in Albany is through private development, where each development pays for their fair share of the required improvements to serve their development and future extensions. What this means is they construct the streets within their subdivision and also improve their parcels frontages along existing streets, sometimes construct off-site improvements that are required to mitigate development impacts, and this can happen in two ways. The first and most typical way that it happens is the developer builds all the required improvements as part of the initial development process. The second way really only applies to existing street frontages and other off-site improvements, and there are times when the city determines that these improvements are not timely with the development, but it's important that the development still pays for their share of the improvements. And in those instances, the city requires that the developer sign what is called a petition for improvement and waiver of remonstrance, or petition and waiver for short. These petitions and waivers then get filed with the deed for each property in the development because they're part of the parent parcel that created the development and the requirement for the improvements. What these documents do is facilitate the formation of a future LID to construct whatever improvements were deferred. What the petition and waivers essentially say is that the property owner requests or petitions for the formation of the LID for specific improvements, and that they waive their right to object or remonstrate against the formation of the LID. Examples of using this type of process were the construction of 53rd Avenue and extensions of North Albany Road into the Covey Run subdivision. That type of process is what would be facilitated tonight through formation of the LID, since the properties recommended for inclusion have petitions and waivers for the street improvements. The two exceptions, excuse me, there are, the exceptions are the two properties on Valley View Drive near Hillcrest that do not have petitions and waivers for the Valley View improvements, and a pending new subdivision on the east side of Crocker, which you'll see on Gordon's maps during his presentation. I also did want to remind council and the audience that the petitions and waivers really only apply to the formation of the LID. Property owners have not waived any of their rights to challenge the apportionment of benefit or, and/or assessment for any improvement made under the petitions and waivers. Before I turn it over to Ron, I just want to conclude with three last points that I wanted to make. First, I wanted to let council know that if property owners with petitions and waivers had expressed concerns about the LID, we still encourage them to let you know about them through the public hearing process. As of 1:30 today, we had heard from 32 of the 72 properties proposed for inclusion within the LID boundary, and each of those properties are opposed to the LID for various reasons. Gordon will be discussing that further, and I suspect you'll hear from several of the property owners tonight based on the level of attendance. For the benefit of the audience, all the letters and emails that have been sent to city staff, the mayor, city counselors, all of them that have made it our way, we have collected those and made them available to each of the counselors for their review. Anything that's came in since about midday on Monday, it got delivered to them tonight, and Gordon's going to talk about that a little bit more as well. The second thing I wanted to mention is that I think it's important for people to remember that LIDs can be formed at any time regardless of whether or not the benefiting properties have petitions and waivers. The only thing that petitions and waivers do is just make the LID process a little more Third and lastly, we had previously discussed these Valley View and Crocker Lane LID improvements as two separate LIDs, and we've combined them into one potential LID just for ease of administration, but the benefiting properties and the proposed assessments for each of the roads are unchanged from what you would have seen previously. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ron and let him talk about the potential benefits of the proposed improvements.
I'm Ron Irish, I'm the City's Transportation Systems Analyst. Jeff's asked me to hit three broad topics today, I'll try and hit those as quickly as I can. The first one is, is a road improvement needed? The second, if so, why start at the north end of Crocker, near Valley View, as opposed to the south near Grand Prairie, or Gibson Hill? And third, what benefits does an urban design have in this case, curbs and gutters, versus a rural design with essentially ditches and no curbs and gutters? So I'd like to start by, it's going to seem like a long way back, I'd like to start when North Albany first annexed into the city. Think back to way the major roads in North Albany looked then, Crocker Lane looks like that today still. So most of the major roads built to rural standards, so there were 12-foot travel lanes in each direction, generally a 6-foot bike lane on each side, and ditches. Speed limits on those roads typically range from 40 to 45 miles an hour, and that's still true today. And that worked pretty well prior to the annexation of North Albany when population densities were low and traffic volumes were low. Worked fairly well. Once North Albany annexed into the city, we started seeing problems as populations grew, and particularly we saw it first at the roads that had the earliest traffic increases. So we spotted it first on North Albany Road, the south end, later we saw it on Gibson Hill Road, and what we would see were complaints from the public about concerns, pedestrians and bicyclists on the shoulders, separated from high-speed traffic by what amounted to a white stripe. So in response to those concerns, we've initiated a series of improvements along North Albany Road, starting down at Highway 20, so curb and gutter there, and we followed that up with a urban improvement near the roundabout at Gibson Hill, and a project this summer that will essentially fill in the gap, so in front of the school where the legs are. You may recall, three or four years ago, there was a group of people in this room, parents and kids complaining about a similar issue on Gibson Hill Road, high-speed traffic, pedestrians on the shoulders separated by a white stripe, the demand was for sidewalks. That was once again driven by urban densities along Gibson Hill Road, inconsistent essentially with the character of the rural character of the street. And in response to that, we have a project going out this year to install sidewalks along Gibson Hill to try and rectify that. So that takes me to what Crocker Lane looks like. Now, Crocker Lane looks today like it did when North Albany annexed into the city. Most of the development directly along Crocker Lane has happened since 2004, and has happened over the north third of the road, essentially the area where the LID is being considered tonight. Back in 2004, we have a traffic volume on Crocker just south of Valley View, it was just over 1,600 trips per day. That was what it was like before we saw any of the development related to the annexation of North Albany. Since that time, we've had a series of developments along the north end of Crocker Lane, that included St. James Estates, 32 lots, Tuscany Estates, 52 lots, the first phase of North Creek Estates, 62 lots, several partitions along Bloom Lane that added 10 or more lots, recently a subdivision by Mr. Stutzman, three more lots. None of those are essentially built out yet, so we still haven't seen the full impact in terms of traffic on Crocker Lane from the developments already approved. Those developments would add just over 1,500 trips a day to Crocker, so comes close to doubling what we saw in 2004 before annexation. We're starting to see if those all build out, about 3,200 trips per day on the north end. We also have pending development application, it's been submitted, but we haven't started work on it yet really, on the second part remainder of North Creek Estates, that's an extra 82 lots, could potentially be more if the forested area doesn't end up transferring to the county. Those 82 lots would add another 785 trips per day to the road, so all told, if all that happens, when it all builds out, north into Crocker, we're looking at about 4,000 trips a day. Now, in terms of other streets in town, we have 4,000 trips a day. An example on this side of the river, Elm Street, I would say, just south of 7th Avenue, so the route to and from the hospital, it has about 4,000 trips a day on it, it's very similar in terms of volumes. In North Albany, I was trying to find one with 4,000, couldn't, so I picked something I thought most of you would know, Quarry, just east of North Albany Road, 1,330 trips per day. So the volumes we'll see on Crocker roughly three times what you currently see on Quarry. Now, this is just at the north end of Crocker, and as you head south, we have more development, prior development that feeds into it, and those volumes will increase. That leads me to, you know, the first question I was supposed to address, why is a road improvement needed? One is, we're likely to start to see on Crocker, as the developments occur and the densities increase, the same types of concerns that we previously saw along North Albany Road and Gibson Hill. Because the road conditions are the same, the speeds are essentially the same, the speed limit on the north end of Crocker right now is 45. Another reason to think about a road improvement on Crocker, and this will apply to all of Crocker, is pavement condition. Crocker is classified as a collector road. The city standard for structural section of a collector road is seven inches of asphalt, over 12 inches of crushed rock that's kind of locks together, over a paving fabric, a geotextile fabric that keeps the underlying soil from contaminating the rock. Basically, it keeps the structure of the pavement together. Existing improvements on Crocker Road, through an old county road, what we have is between two to three inches of asphalt, over 12 inches of round river rock, that tends to move when it's loaded, over no geotextile fabric, which means that it's contaminated by the subbase. What that means is that the road's not very stable, and once it starts to deteriorate, the base isn't strong enough to keep it in place, and so it deteriorates quickly. You're starting to see evidence of that, in particular on the south end of the road, where the traffic volumes are higher and then more trench cuts to this day. The south end, condition-wise, looks worse than the north end, structural sections are similar, the reason the south end looks worse is because of the loading. Which leads me to the second question, which now seems hard to answer, if the south end is worse, why start on the north end? The reason the LID is being looked at on the north end is primarily that's where the development's been occurring. And in Albany, we tend to tie road improvements initially to the development of parcels. So the adjoining parcels have developed along the north end, the south end tended to be already developed. Most of the lots are already there. So we have, for instance, some improvements that have been done along portions of the north end, we've had some subdivisions go in where they paid a fee, we had some developments go in where they did a petition and waiver, we have a mix of things that have happened on the north end. If, if, at the end of the day, council concludes that an LID is needed to fund even a component of the cost of the road improvement, it will never be easier, painful as it is today, it won't get easier in the future. And the reason for that is, there are several of the waivers that are currently on file, predominantly on the east side, or the west side of the road, that will expire in 1996. In 2016, they were given to us in 1996. So if, for instance, you decided you had to form an LID at some point, but you deferred that formation for another five years, the result would be that a lot of the waivers would expire, and development would continue to occur during that time, 82 lots that the second phase might happen. The result then in that future LID hearing is that we would have close to twice as number of property owners involved. So if you think you need to do an LID, deferring it makes it harder and not easier, not just for the city, but for the property owners as well, because there will be more of them. The last topic I was going to touch on is why an urban design instead of a rural design. Three basic reasons for that. At the north end of Crocker, there have been several smaller subdivisions that have already built curb and gutter along their piece of the road, so there are some urban improvements already in place. Some of those pieces have sidewalks, some don't. The ones that have sidewalk are the ones where building permits have already been pulled. But where the curb and gutter is there, next to a vacant lot, no sidewalk, when those building permits are pulled, that sidewalk will go in. But there are pieces of curb and gutter up there, if we do an urban road, we'll be able to make use of those and not essentially pull them out and throw them away. So there's some, some benefit to making, both in terms of cost and efficiency of making use of the improvements that are there. The second reason to think about an urban improvement is that it takes less rideaway. And this may be more important at the south end of the road in the future than it is at the north end, but both an urban and a rural road, both take travel lanes, both take bike lanes, those widths are roughly comparable, so no difference. Urban and rural both require sidewalks when you reconstruct a road, the sidewalk width is basically the same in both cases, no difference. The difference stems from the difference between the landscape strip in a rural road and a ditch, or the landscape strip in an urban road and a ditch that you need in a rural road. And the ditch takes up significantly more space than does the landscape strip. So there is sufficient rideaway today along the entire length of Crocker from Valley View until you get right at the intersection at Gibson Hill to build an urban-style road and not get additional rideaway dedication. If we went to a rural style and kept the ditches and had to build sidewalks behind them, we would need additional rideaway dedication, in particular the south two-thirds of the road. That section already has a lot of houses built up to it, some houses back up to it, some houses, particularly the west side front on it, so if we do rideaway takes for a rural road, it's probably five to six feet along both sides, we'll be eating into backyards and front yards. So that's one of the differences, the second difference. And the last difference is the urban road offers an opportunity to change the character of the road and a chance to get the speed limit reduced. In a urban-style road, we can put in curbs and gutters, we can narrow the road a little bit, we can put some, some changes in alignment in, we can better delineate pedestrian crossing points. That will allow us to go to ODOT and petition for a change in the speed limit down to something that might be more appropriate for the densities we're starting to see. In my mind, I'm thinking 35 is probably a more reasonable number than the 45 it is today. If it stays a rural road, it'll be in essentially the same boat that Gibson Hill and Valley View are today, both of which we get complaints on. Because we're not changing the character of the road in those cases, we can't convince ODOT to give us a reduction or a change in the speed limit. And ODOT looks at the speed people are traveling on the road, and if you haven't changed the character of the road, that's the speed limit they set. So those are, those are the reasons. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation. If you have questions, and if not, I'll vacate my seat.
Questions of Ron at this point? You still got questions, you can still have time for staff also.
Right now.
Okay, all right. Then Gordon.
Are people able to hear back there? Is our, I get the impression that people are not hearing. So I'm wondering if Michael can turn the volume up in there, or can we turn it up here?
I think some of it, maybe, maybe when Ron speaks, he can use, if he has to answer a question, he can use the remote, maybe can pick it up and get it closer to him. Ron, we just don't know, Ron is soft-spoken, so.
I've got the same problem I have, Ron.
I know.
Sorry. Thirty years difference.
So, were you able to, folks here, when City Engineer Jeff Blaine was up before, you were able to hear then? It's Ron, he's soft-spoken.
It's just your fault.
Many years. We'll have him use the remote next time, so if he, if he needs to answer a question. Okay, Gordon? And you might want to maybe move, see, got the mic in front of him? Let's see if you can-
A sign that says, "Don't move it."
Sure.
You ought to be able to turn it on.
Can you hear me?
She's bringing it over, Gordon.
No.
I think it needs to be on.
No?
Yep. Okay. Everyone can hear?
Okay. As Jeff Blaine said earlier, we've combined the Valley View project and the Crocker Lane project into one LID for administrative purposes. I'm first going to show you the Crocker Lane assessment area. The properties that are included in the dark outlined, let me get a pen here, in the dark outline here, that's the LID boundary that we proposed. The properties that are included are, the ones that are hashed are subject to a petition waiver, and the only one that's not is this Stutzman subdivision here that, they've recently been approved for a new four-lot subdivision, so that's why they're in, in the LID boundary. These properties here on the west side of Crocker all became subject to an LID, or to a petition waiver in 1996 when the Williamson property, which included this house and all of this vacant land at the time, they wanted to partition off the house and sell the vacant land to a developer for a subdivision, and so when they did that partition, they were required to sign the petition waiver document obligating the entire property to a future local improvement district. Kern's property up here, it's around the same era, around 1996, they, this was a vacant property, there was nothing on it at all, and they applied to build a single-family house on the lot, and at that time, they signed a petition waiver for improvements along Crocker Lane. These three lots were once a single lot, it's a Doorty partition, they signed a petition waiver for both- They signed a petition waiver for both Crocker and Bloom Lane because they have frontage on both, the parent parcel had frontage on both Crocker and Bloom Lane. And anyway, so that's why these three lots are in the LID. This one's a little harder to explain. The Miller property down here, it was the, the house that was on a large vacant property that later became Crocker Heights subdivision. The owner of the property partitioned off the house, signed the petition waiver, and then sold the remaining piece to the developer of Crocker Heights subdivision. So that's why this property is subject to a petition waiver. Later on, the Crocker Heights developer paid into a fund for their improvements to, to Crocker Lane. All right. Okay, I'm going to, I'll show you properties along Crocker Lane that are not proposed to be in the local improvement district. The first one is Saint James Estates. When they built their subdivision, they built curb and gutter and their building sidewalk along both Valley View and Crocker, along their frontage, so they've already made their urban street improvements. Tuscany Estates subdivision, they did the same. They built curb and gutter along their frontage. And like is mentioned earlier, Crocker Heights, they paid a, a fee based on their frontage on Crocker Lane into a fund that we are proposing, the city put towards this project to reduce the assessments for the properties that are being assessed. These four properties in the dark color here, they all have single-family homes on them. They've never applied to do any kind of development. They've, they're not subject to a petition waiver. We've proposed that the city put eighty-five thousand dollars toward the project to cover what these properties would pay in the future if they ever develop. So if they ever come in to partition their property, do subdivide it, they're going to have to pay frontage fees, connection fees along Crocker Lane, and that totals like a hundred and thirty-nine dollars a foot currently. And that comes up, when you add up all the frontages of those four properties, that's eighty-five thousand dollars. So that's what staff has recommended we put, the city put toward the project. Let's see. And then, like I mentioned earlier, Crocker Heights paid the fee, that, that fee totals twenty-nine thousand dollars in today's dollars, based on what they paid back then. Our proposed assessment is a per-lot assessment. So all of the lots in North Creek subdivision would be counted as one lot. The Williamson property, we've determined could subdivide again into five lots at the minimum, if they tore the house down, possibly six. The MBTH property, we assessed, we've proposed assessing them for a hundred and thirteen lots. That's based on the same density as Saint James Estates. These are standard ten-thousand-square-foot lots, and we've put that density on this property, we end up with a hundred and thirteen lots. The Kearns property, we came up with an assessment of three lots because, based on where the house is sitting, it'd be kind of hard to do four, but they could get three houses in there total. And the Doorty property, it's already set up for another partition to have another house here, so it's being assessed for two. And then the Stutzman property, like I said, they're, they're in for a subdivision approval for, a four-lot subdivision, so we were going to assess them for four. And that, that assessment comes out to, the project along Crocker's, one million six-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand is our estimate, and there's a total of a hundred and ninety-two lots there, that comes out to seven thousand six-hundred-and-fifteen dollars per lot. But the assessments could be lowered if the city provided funds for any of those three projects, our three sources that I talked about, the twenty-nine thousand dollars for Crocker Heights frontage, the eighty-five thousand dollars for the, the connection fees for the four lots that haven't developed, and then also four hundred and thirty-eight-thousand-six-hundred dollars for STCI, our STC fees that the city could possibly put toward the project. That's the maximum allowable toward, based on the STC methodology, it's thirty percent of the total project cost for Crocker could be paid for by the city if the council chooses to do so. Next, I'll show you the Valley View assessed area. It includes the very same lots that the Williamson owner basically obligated with the petition waiver. That petition waiver was for Crocker and Valley View. And it also includes these two properties that are, that aren't currently subject to petition waiver. The reason for including those two is we wanted to get a, a connection all the way from Crocker to Hillcrest. We didn't want some sort of pedestrian improvement to stop short of Hillcrest, which then leads to the Benton County Park. The same kind of assessment methodology, the sixty-two lots, each will have one lot, Williamson, five lots, the MBTH property, a hundred and thirteen lots, and one each for the two properties up there. Okay, so here's a map with the entire LID on it. It shows these properties on the east side of Crocker are assessed just for Crocker. These two properties are assessed just for Valley View, and these properties are assessed We held a neighborhood meeting January thirteenth, and there were nine property owners there, two representatives of Benton County, and two representatives of the MBTH development. They attended the meeting, okay? We committed to the property owners that we would pass their comments on to, on, but also encourage them to participate in the public hearing process. I'd like to give you a rundown of the main points made at the neighborhood meeting on January thirteenth. Okay, the, the west two property owners on Valley View Drive questioned the need for sidewalk improvements on Valley View, and they had some concerns about the constructability of a sidewalk, and impacts to their driveway slopes, and reducing their parking, and decreasing safety for entering and exiting their properties. One property owner thought Crocker Lane improvements should be completed all at once, from Valley View to Gibson Hill Road, and after, if there was no plan to do the rest of Crocker in the near future, that this project was a waste of money. Others said that if the LID is formed, property owners want the city to obligate the maximum city funding identified, potential city participation. One property owner stated that they didn't see the value, value they received for this expense, and they weren't interested in spending their money on it. Other property owners expressed frustration with the petition waiver process, but one property owner did mention that Hayden Homes actually provided them with a copy of the petition waiver to make sure they were aware of the requirement before they purchased their home. Some owners expressed the city's only doing this LID now because the twenty-year limit of the petition waiver is approaching and that the improvements weren't really needed. One property owner felt that the subdivisions on the east side of Crocker, not in the LID boundary, got off easy with inexpensive frontage improvement fees paid. Okay, since we sent out the notice of the public hearing, we've received a number of letters and emails regarding the LID. Got a bunch later, late this afternoon, so Jeff didn't get the current numbers to you here recent minute ago. Let's see, okay. I've got a little map that shows the response we got. Okay. The, the black dots are letters or emails that we got, and the stars on there are people who attended the neighborhood meeting. So, let's see, we, we received a number of letters and emails regarding the LID. In total, we received forty-three letters and emails about the LID. Twenty-two were provided to council at their work session on Monday, and we gave them to you on Monday, so you'd have a chance to read them before this meeting. Since then, we've received an additional twenty-one. Those are colored gray in that packet that I passed out to you, so, okay. Since some property owners sent several letters and emails, we created this map so that you could see how things were, because we received more emails and letters than there are properties that responded. Okay, what you see in here is that of the seventy-two properties included in the boundary, thirty-five property owners provided letters or emails, and of the sixty-two properties within the North Creek subdivision, thirty-three submitted letters or emails that were opposed to the LID. One of the letters, or emails that we received was from someone who didn't live in the area, and so they aren't shown on the map. Okay, you'll also notice that we received two submitted some properties on the east side of Crocker. This property is not in the LID boundary. However, they had concerns about how the project would affect their frontage on both Crocker and possibly on Bloom Lane with how the intersection might be treated there with the road project on Crocker. And one from this property owner here, who was the developer of that partition on Bloom Lane. I should explain that originally, back in May, we actually considered including Bloom Lane in the, in a local improvement district that would include all three roads. Since dropped Bloom Lane, and we informed these property owners here that while they were no longer going to be part of a Bloom Lane LID, they were still part of the potential Crocker LID. Back to the, to the letters, the, the most common comments that we, that we saw in the letters were that people said they could not afford these payments, and that Hayden Homes did not inform them of the petition waiver, that the taxes they pay should cover these street improvements, and that the city is only doing this because petition waivers are expiring, and that Crocker is fine as it is and does not need to be improved. There were a lot of other points made, but these are the ones that seem to come up in pretty much every letter. Okay. Staff is recommending forming the LID as proposed, however, there are some process considerations regarding Valley View Drive. We suggest that we initiate the Crocker design as soon as council approves it with anticipated construction in the summer of two thousand and sixteen. We think we should wait on any Valley View design until we find out about any possible arrangement between the Benton County Park and the developer of the subdivision. It might be useful if I put a map up here to point to. This is the subdivision proposal that's recently, recently been submitted. This would be the, the new subdivision. They, they show avoiding some wetlands here. This area up here, there's the, the Benton County Park, Parks Department and the developer are negotiating whether to, or not to make some kind of property exchange to protect this area and turn it into an expansion of the park. It'd actually be a twenty-foot strip here connecting the two, so they would actually more or less form one piece of property, and that'd be an expansion of the Benton County North Albany Park. So part of the idea is that in lieu of a, a path within the right-of-way, a, some kind of multi-use path could be actually in the park and make the same connection and serve the same purpose, and the developer and the Parks Department could possibly build that instead. And if that happened, then the Valley View improvements wouldn't need to happen at all. All right. So staff recommends that the city contribute the five-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-six-hundred dollars toward the Crocker Lane improvements, reducing the Crocker Lane per-lot assessments by thirty-eight percent. I do want to remind council that Crocker Lane is not on the TSTC-funded list, so if you choose to do this, you'd need to move Crocker Lane onto the TSTC-funded list, and some other project would have to move off. This isn't in your, in staff report that you've got, but a similar approach could be used for Valley View Drive. It actually qualifies for a forty percent city contribution based on the transportation plan. So it's not shown in your attachments, but if you did that, the assessments on Valley View Drive, assuming went ahead and built that, those assessments could possibly be reduced if council did the same thing and put Valley View Drive on the TSTC-funded list. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
The number of lots in this, I am, I've counted it a couple of three times, and I must be missing, because I don't get over a hundred.
It was about eighty-two, I think, something like that. Like I said, the way we gave them their assessment was based on the same density as Saint James Estates. So if they were only assessed for eighty-two, then we have to assess the park property for something. They got frontage on Crocker Lane as well, so it's, it's the eighty-two lots plus the park property and whatever else, the wetlands and the whole property, not just the eighty-two lots, so that's.
So other people would not be paying more if that, if that donation to Benton County happened?
Right. Based, our LID would still give them a hundred and thirteen lots, even though there's only eighty-two there, the property'd be assessed for a hundred and thirteen.
Any other questions, Gordon? Okay. Mark, do you want to touch base on if the council forms a LID, the process over the timing of when assessments would actually take place?
Sure. So, so the process for the LID, should you form it April twenty-second or thereafter, that would trigger staff going forward with design and then construction. The cost for the improvements would not be assessed to the properties until after construction is complete and the total project costs are known. So if construction happens in the summer of two thousand and sixteen, I would anticipate that assessments would happen sometime in the, the fall or winter of two thousand and sixteen, or potentially just after the New Year of two thousand and seventeen. Prior to that assessment, there will be another public hearing for council before final assessments would be levied.
Thank you. Okay. Dick, did you have a question, Jeff? Before we take public testimony?
Yeah, I was going to ask Jeff that when we extended North Albany Road over the, into the subdivision on the other side, did that whole subdivision, was they, were they part of the LID, and did they have a charge for it?
I was not part of that when it happened, so.
Yeah, I, I have the history on that.
Yeah, I've forgotten exactly how that worked out.
The property, as I recall, the properties over the hill already had paid for their improvements of that roadway, and so they were not included in the LID. So it was only the properties that had frontage on that improvement, because those, those properties to the north had paid for that. It's not right. Okay? Thank you.
Actually, the Cubby Run subdivision, they, those lots each had a one-lot assessment. There's a couple hundred lots out there, and then the, the four properties that actually fronted the road each got assigned so many lots for their assessments, so there were, yeah, the Cubby Run subdivision, people all paid for that extension of North Albany Road.
Thank you, Gordon.
Everybody in the subdivision paid for the extension?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the same thing we're talking about here, basically, sort of.
You, you could draw some similarities.
Mm-hmm. Right. And the same as like Fifty-third Avenue, Spring Meadow, that, they had to pay for Fifty-third plus a bridge and a traffic signal, and I've seen us do Marion Street in Grand Prairie. Sometimes at local improvement districts, you get to the process, like Grand Prairie, and it was, all of Lexington was to be included in that local improvement district. And then what happened was, you know, we had a lot of folks that weren't pleased, and so it kind of got some neighboring property owners together and developers, and they worked out a deal, and we did not have to, and they worked with the county, because it was still a county road, and then the LID was not formed, and the road was, was constructed, so sometimes it's.
And curbs and gutters.
Right. Mm-hmm. And, and sidewalks and bike lanes, so it's, sometimes it's just a process we're going through, and, but this is where we hear the testimony and be able to, you know, work towards getting a resolution to making a safe street and getting a, you know, a fair a safe street and getting a, you know, a fair cost distribution on this too, so. Okay, so with that, and council, any more questions of staff? Okay. So, I have 27 people signed up to want to speak, and seeing it's about 8:30, if everybody spoke for about five minutes, I think we would be here for about, until about 11 o'clock. So, I don't think everyone wants to stay till 11:00. So, what I would suggest is if you have already submitted written testimony to the council, if you, when I call your name, if you'd like to just come up and just make reference, I'm here to speak either for or against, and I had already submitted written testimony, and this way your name is down on the record. This isn't sort of a debate-type forum, so it's more we're hearing your testimony, hearing your concerns, and so if you do have a question, we're not going to ignore the question. The question will be written down, as staff will be compiling it, and then they will address it at the end of the testimony. And it'll all be a part of the record too, in case you have to leave before the end, at least you'll be able to read all of that on the minutes too. These are live on the internet. You'd be able to even watch it on the YouTube video that we have on our city website tomorrow. If you end up, cannot stay for all the meeting, you can still be able to view that online, so. And plus, on channel 28 Comcast, it's on 7:00 each evening, or 23 for North Albany area. So, first with that, I have, there's two people that had signed up at first, which would be from Benton County Parks, and Jeff Powers wanted to say a few things first, and so did Miles Bredner also, before we start on, on all the residents. So, was Jeff still here? Or is, yes? And so, the process too would be is when you do come forward, you'll want to state your name and spell your last name, and then furnish your address for the record. Okay? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilors, Jeff Powers, P.O.W.E.R.S., I'm the Director of the Benton County Natural Areas and Parks Department. Just want to reconfirm that we are certainly in discussion with the developer relative to 10 acres that he has essentially donated for the purpose of addition to North Albany Park. Our considerations, as has been sort of alluded to already, is although it's a donation, we would still have an obligation relative to the LIDs. So, Benton County wants to be clear as to what those obligations are relative to both Valley View and Crocker. And additionally, as has also been alluded to, we've been discussing the potential of a trail through the donation area. Multi-use path probably would be a more accurate description. We feel that would be an appropriate amenity within the park, should it be deemed that it be suitable in lieu of sidewalk up on Valley View. So, we're certainly open to that, and would actually incorporate that into part of the amenities within that park addition. I want to stress also that our intention with that acreage would be to certainly recognize it as really one of the last forested areas within that neighborhood. Hold that as really open space, parkland, don't anticipate development, really. See it more as a natural area, open space opportunity, again, with trail connectivity. Obviously, the developer has allowed for a path, another multi-use trail that would connect North Albany Park proper with that 10-acre addition. So, again, we see that all as appropriate, and certainly from what we've heard from the neighborhood, they treasure the idea of that space being kept as forested area, and that would be compatible with our goal as well.
That'd be wonderful. Yeah. So, is there questions of Jeff? Okay, well, thank you.
Here.
Yep.
Floyd? You referred to the donation. Has that been concluded at this time, or is that still proposed?
No. So, we're not taking action on accepting that donation until the picture relative to what would be county's obligation for the rest of the LID becomes clear, and then the disposition of the pathway, and that decision is made.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, Miles?
I'm Miles Bredner, M.Y.L.A.S., B.R.E.A.D.N.E.R., business address 123 Northwest 7th Street, Corvallis, Oregon, 97330, the managing partner of MBBH Development, and the owner of the 31 acres. Mayor Canopa and members of council staff, thank you for doing an oftentimes thankless job, and city staff, thank you for years of really a nice working relationship. I've worked in Albany, I'll be really brief, I've worked in Albany for 22 years. I've built 1,000 lots in Albany. I've done many projects, and I've never had a failed project, and I've committed all of my capital and all of my efforts to working in this town in the 20 years I've been here. And by way of background on this site, this was a product of the Great Recession. This property sold in 2008 for $3 million cash, and in addition, there were 62 lots constructed next door, which is the first phase of North Creek subdivision. This entire project was financed by Columbia River Bank. The developer went broke, the bank went broke. The assets of the bank were purchased by another bank, and there was a loss-share agreement between the FDIC and that bank. In 2012, nobody was buying anything. Hayden Homes wanted to stay in business in Albany. I bought the 58 lots for them and landbanked them for them. They continued to work through the recession. We were not part of the development that built the first 58 lots. If we would have been the developers, we would have expected to pay for a half-street improvement during construction of Phase 1, and when Phase 1 recorded, it would have had that half-street. So, we're not a part of that not getting done. We were Johnny Come-Lately folks that came later. And separately, the 31 acres was purchased, and there had been a prior plat approved for about 121 lots. I didn't like the look of that layout after walking the site, and I spotted North Albany Park nearly contiguous, and I collaborated with city staff and immediately with Jeff Powers to see if we could downscale this development and add the treat area to the North Albany Park. And I'm 62 years old and enjoying being a grandfather, and I'm not going to do this this much longer. And because of the way that this property was acquired in 2012 in a bulk purchase of a number of properties from Columbia Bank, we can afford to make a donation of the most pristine part of that property. So, that's what we'd hope to do. So, Jeff Powers came aboard, has wanted to do that with us. So, over to the formation of the LID. After working here for 22 years, I would never say that I am against something that the city wants to do, but I will stop short of saying I'm for it, because there is a huge negative financial impact to this going ahead to me, and potentially at the cost of losing this park donation. If we were conditioned in our subdivision approval to build a half-street improvement to city standards, it would cost us approximately $340,000. If everything goes really right under this formation of the LID, the minimum cost is going to be $535,000. So, there's $200,000 that's just going away. I am gifting the property to Benton County for a park. Benton County, however, will be responsible for their half-street improvement. I know that Benton County had it in their, in their figuring that there would be approximately $140,000, which was a proportion of what my overall cost was going to be. And they even needed help with the $140,000. And I was going to help a little bit with the $140,000, but the well is dry there. So, if they're now forced with a couple hundred thousand dollars or more, then I don't know what that will do to the park donation. And if we don't get the park donation, then we're back to the drawing boards, and we're looking at probably resubmitting a subdivision application to develop the property to its highest and best use. So, if we, if we can't make the donation, we can't make the donation. And so, I would ask that you just consider that. We would hope that we would be able to privately be able to make those improvements, pay for them. We would expect to do that. And we would do that right from the start of our property, right up to Valley View, and we would help Benton County get that done. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Any questions of Miles? All right. Okay. Thank you. Okay. The next two, and it's Brian and Amy S.I.K., can't read the rest, but on Kingston Way?
Yeah.
Okay. The two of you like to come forward, or one of you at a time?
Yeah, we could. So, yes, S.I.K., O.R.A., 2677 Northwest Kingston. And at this point in-
So, how do you spell your last name?
S.I.K., O.R.A.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. And at this time, I think that most of what we are going to say has kind of been addressed, and I'd like to see kind of how it plays out a little bit at this point. I am definitely for the record against what's being assessed, you know, to us, but I'd like to, I'd like to see the process at this point in time, but go on record, and I know my wife will as well, on record as saying that we are absolutely against what is assessed at this point.
Okay. Good. All right. Okay. Thank you. And so, Amy, you were the same, okay. All right. Next is Brian Grands. Brian, are you here? Oh, you don't want to speak? Okay. And next is Howard Phillipson. Does that sound right? On, is he coming? Okay. Sorry if I didn't get your name right there.
I have first names, so I don't-
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
My name is Howard Phillipson. Last name is P.H.I.L.I.P.S.O.N. I live in a North Creek subdivision at 2412 Northwest White Oak Avenue. And I am against the LID. I've looked at the property up there. First off, we get no benefit from it because it ends basically at the entrance road to the North Creek subdivision. And the other thing is, I want to know why we have to pay to repair and rebuild the whole street when developers across the other side were now required by the city to rebuild the street. I've walked that area, all they've done is some sidewalks, curbs, and a little drainage. That's it. And they repaved it till the bike lane, but there has been no street rebuilding. So, why are we having to pay to rebuild the entire street? That is not right.
I think what was mentioned then is so on the east side, some of those developments had paid into a fund, which is being contributed to lowering the cost of this LID. So, they, they're not part, they paid into a fund.
There was no figures at that time available, so they could not have paid enough.
Yeah, it was-
And the law states, as far as I know, for when you do that, is, I don't know when there's payment in the fund name, but it always used to be is if you had to do the street improvements, you had to do your half of the street out to the middle of the street. There was no payment into a fund.
Yeah. It is a financing tool that's acceptable nowadays, so, yeah. Okay. Thank you, Howard. All right. Next is, is it Lyda Phillipson? Is she wanting to speak or not?
Please.
Lisa? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Siobhan Sargent. Then after Siobhan is Ken Marshall.
My name is Siobhan Sargent, and I reside in the North Creek Development at 2422 Northwest White Oak with my husband. So, I did not submit comments ahead of time, so I wanted to be sure to be on the record that I'm opposed to the assessment. When the engineer spoke, he commented that improvements are for potential beneficiaries of a project, and I feel like the beneficiaries are disproportionately the non-LID-proposed residents. So, you know, development happens over time, and, you know, we're all quote "part of the problem of development." We all want to live somewhere that's urban and beautiful, and so some people moved to North Albany and in developments 20 years ago. Some of us moved in last year. But I feel like we're disproportionately impacting negatively financially the people who moved in more recently. In this case, assigning all of the cost to people who recently moved in when the benefits go to people who have been living there for 20, 30 years. And while I understand that they moved in under different circumstances, I still think that I personally don't want to pay for people to be able to go 55 miles an hour on Crocker when that's going to be everybody beyond us too. So, like I said, disproportionately impacting one community. Thank you.
All right. So, if we can also kind of refrain from clapping, so then we can be able, go ahead and Ken, come on forward, so we can kind of make sure it just delays the process, but thank you. So.
My name is Ken Marshall. I live at 2697 Broadway Street Northwest. I'm, which is in the, not in the LID area, but would benefit if there's a benefit to improving Crocker Lane. I think there's differences of opinion whether it would be benefited or not by these improvements, and we would not be financially impacted, although we would presumably benefit from the road. So, I'm in complete agreement with the previous speaker that there seems to be an unfair distribution of the cost. I've been in the real estate business, this is my 40th year. I've done a number of subdivisions, and I have never seen a case where there seems to be an overreach going on of charging or assessing a recent subdivision, even though this goes back 20 years, the economy, the, to full street improvements, the gentleman that spoke before the lady was correct in saying that the build-out of the street fills out all the way and it benefits the people on the other side of the road. So, there, and I appreciate Floyd's motion to table this and bring further consideration in as to who is going to benefit, how these costs might be spread out over, I think there would be a benefit for improving Crocker because of the engineering report about the deterioration of the road. None of us wants to see the road deteriorate, of course, to something that's, that's not safe. I'm in favor of a reduction in the speed limit up there. I'm still raising two children up there. I sold a home on Brianna Street to my stepdaughter and son-in-law last year, and I'm representing them tonight, Brittany and Nick Wong, and the process, I was, I was their broker. The CCNRs were fairly confusing. It's not often that you see more than one set of CCNRs when you go into purchasing a subdivision home. The waiver and remuneration was on the preliminary title report, and it does say, so your attention could be drawn to it, but it does say this on the second page, "The completion of any improvement petitioned for by this agreement shall satisfy the terms of this agreement for said improvement, and any subsequent reconstruction, oversizing, or repairs of said improvement shall not be authorized by this agreement." And I realize oversizing may have to do with sewer and water normally, but in this case, I think there's an overreaching going on and an oversizing of the assessment against the people when the- when the road improvements are extending to the other side of the road. And the developer certainly understands, who spoke about improving his half of the street improvement, and that's certainly standard in the industry and has been for a long time. I've even seen up to maybe two-thirds. We just did a project in Lebanon, a 60-unit department project that I was involved in as a partner, and we ended up having to improve a two-thirds because it was a gravel road when we went in there, and I understand that. We also oversized the sewer and water for the city, ran it an extra quarter mile for the city, and we're getting benefits tax-wise from that. But here, we have homeowner, you know, first-time homebuyers, a number of them in this subdivision, these 62 homes that are, or most of the 62 homes, I realize some of them were there earlier, that are getting blindsided by this. They're not sophisticated realtors with 40 years of experience. And so, I think there's a highly emotional reaction, which is understandable. And I think the presentation of this could have been given a little more thought, and you might have anticipated what might happen. So, I'm glad that you are postponing the decision, so you can look at the bigger picture. I know I, myself, we pay a lot of taxes already in that area, but I'm certainly, if the improvements are going to be made, I would rather see a, all of the above or all of the below. And if you're going to improve Crocker, I think you need to look at improving it all the way to Gibson and coming up with a plan to finance it. How is it going to end? That's the question. How is somebody riding a bike, the kids that ride their bikes on there? I've got two of them, a 10-year-old and a 13-year-old. What happens where it stops and the ditch begins? And people walking at night, are you planning on lighting that area? You know, these are questions that are unanswered right now. I don't think it's a great idea to do a third street or a half-street improvement there. I think we're all bigger than that, and I would just like to see more consideration of, if you're going to do it, do it right. That's all, okay? Thank you very much.
If you can. Next is Brian Moran on White Oak. And then Colin Huber's after. I just want to mention kind of one thing. I know a lot of folks are thinking, I do pay a lot of taxes, and we've had that question is, you know, can it, why can't it be contributed, pay for the street? A lot of people don't realize, but 100% of your property taxes, city property taxes, do not even fully fund police and fire services. So, it's not like it takes all other resources of user fees and franchise fees, state revenue sharing fees, everything else to end up supporting all city services. So, what we use for streets is gas tax revenues, and which has been very limited. And it's not enough to be able to handle 350 miles of streets in Albany. So, this isn't the only street that we have a lot of improvements to do. We have many streets. And also, part of, before the development came in, the condition of approval was for the new development to pay for Crocker. So, it's not all of Albany paying for Crocker because the subdivisions are the ones that benefit from being able to be built. That's their access is Crocker. This is very common that we see with all cities is when it comes to the main road that needs to be improved to support the density, who's going to pay for it? And this is very common on this. And this is where we have to be able to balance to see what's going to be the fair way of funding the street. But I just want you to know, we don't have a big pot of money to be able to do all the improvements for all of Crocker and many of our other streets, so, yeah. That's why we're here. That's why we're here, listening to what you, you know, what your opinions are on this. But I want you to know, you know, please, look at the council up here as being able to take in that consideration because we weren't the ones that were where the development came in. Okay, all right, Ken or Brian, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brian Moran, and I live in the North Creek Development with my wife Siobhan, who already spoke, at 2422 Northwest White Oak Avenue. And I'd just like to thank the council's time tonight, as well as the staff for the presentation. There's a lot of information there that, even in the letter that we received, I did not have, so I thank you for that. It is a thankless job. But as the LID is right now, I cannot support it, and I oppose it. I think there needs to be a little bit more work done on it. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Brian. And Colin? And after Colin is Mike LaFon.
Okay, my name is Colin Huber. I also live in the North Creek neighborhood. Address 2640 Red Oak Street. I'm representing myself and my wife, Mackenzie. We are just newly moved into the neighborhood, about a year. And I just want to, I guess, on record oppose, said I oppose this, and so does my wife. But also just reiterate that the improvements that are being made right now are on the, on, the vast majority are on the north upper side of Crocker, which, if the, part of the purpose is to bring people out of their neighborhoods and give them a safe place to walk, I can tell you, they're not going to walk it anyway because it's steep. And there's no, frankly, it's a waste of money to try and put sidewalks or whatever sort of bike lanes to make, to allow people to actually go up the hill because it's too steep, and no one, no one goes up there. Second point is, we as neighbors below the assessed road never go up there as well. We don't drive up there. There's no shopping. There's no restaurants. We have no reason to travel that way. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Colin. And Mike LaFon? And after Mike is Jess, Jesse Lovrian.
My name is Mike LaFon, L.A.F.O.N. Reside at 2663 Red Oak Street Northwest. We started this meeting with the pledge of allegiance. The pledge reminds me of the founding of our great country and its many principles. One of those was the fight against unfair taxation. As one of the property owners affected by this proposed LID, we object to this form of unfair taxation because it places the financial burden of this project on the backs of a select group of property owners instead of distributing these costs to all property owners who would benefit from this project. Those who have been selected seem to be arbitrary. I know there must be some type of formula that is being used, but for those of us who are being hit the most financially, it just seems totally arbitrary. There's a lot of people that are going to benefit from this. We've been given a lot of additional information tonight. I would like to know if I can also make a further comment at your next meeting, so that I can digest all the information that was processed tonight, and then respond to that as well.
The record will be left open.
All right, thank you. One of those was that there were approximately 1,500 trips per day made on Crocker Lane. That tells me we've got 62 properties, I believe, in North Creek currently. 1,500 trips per day, that's benefiting a whole lot more people than it is just North Creek. Either that, or everybody in North Creek is driving up and down that road about 10 times a day to go to places that aren't there, restaurants and filling stations. You say you're struggling for money. So are we. You say your only way to pay for these types of roads is through a gas tax. Why aren't you considering raising your gas tax to pay for roads? Many cities are doing that. I don't know if the City of Albany is currently charging a gas tax, but that is another means of funding these roads. A formula was given tonight for those on the east side of Crocker, at $139 a foot. If we use that same formula for doing the entire 2,100 feet, we come up with a cost of $292,000 to do 2,100 feet. And yet, the city is telling us it's going to be close to 1.5 million. Why the discrepancy? You're also telling us it'll be about 1.5 million now, but the project is at least a year out, and that project could go higher. In fact, when's the last time any of us heard of a project coming in under budget? So, the numbers you have given us right now for the distribution per tax lot is likely to be higher than what you've told us now. And we can't afford what you've told us now. We need to live within our means. The city needs to live within their means. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, Mike LaFon? Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Jesse, Jess Lov- Lov- Yep. You can be able to pronounce your name for me.
That would be Jesse Lovren.
Okay, thank you.
I'm with Hayden Homes, address 2464 Southwest Glacier Place, Suite 110, Redmond, Oregon, 97756. And I'm here tonight in opposition to the creation of an LID. It's a struggle for me because I understand the importance of having proper infrastructure as a city and that the city's struggling with finding a way to make this happen. So, I respect what the city is trying to do. However, you know, it's our position that the assessments levy are excessive. So, we're really contesting the assessments. As was mentioned before, Miles had gone through the history of this site and had been mentioned before. This property's changed hands several times. This waiver of remonstrance that's on the property was created in 1996, long before any of the parties that are involved in it now were at the table. Since then, one of the challenges that we have is that there's been other mechanisms available that could fund improvement. We purchased finished lots in this community. We started buying lots in North Creek in 2012. The development that occurred before then, that could have been subject to paying into a fund, as was mentioned, or requirement to build the infrastructure, has been previously mentioned several times. When development occurs, and we do quite a bit of development, it's expected that we're going to be doing improvements along our frontages. And that didn't occur this time, and now that, those costs are being passed on to the homeowners who are in much worse shape to be able to front those costs. Also, when you look at the assessments, I'm speaking, we don't really have any properties left in North Creek. We've put our last foundations in. And I'm speaking just based upon the relationship we have with our customers and our, and the community of Albany. But those improvements, those assessments are 7,000, 7,000-plus per lot. That's a lot of money. And when you're looking at development, a large-scale development, you can develop a capital fund that can absorb that, and you can project that. That's part of doing business as a developer. But when you're an individual homeowner, $7,000 is an excessive amount of money. There's other things that could have been looked at, too. And as Miles had mentioned, the opportunity to do that development in the private sector, it becomes a lot cheaper. This is going to be a public improvement, to do the work along Crocker, whereas that can be done through a private that you can, competitive bid to do the work. It's no longer prevailing wage. It's done a lot lesser, lesser rate. There's significant cost savings that'd occur if this wasn't a public development. I'd also note that the North Creek community, for example, is, I found this out tonight, is subject to assessments for both Crocker and also for the Valley View. I don't quite see what the connection is with Crocker or for the North Creek to Valley View. It's, when you look at the frontage improvements, the frontage that North Creek shares, it's a very, a minimal amount of improvements, and yet, they're sharing a large burden with that. So, we're here tonight, I'm here tonight to, in opposition to the LID, namely because of the assessments. I think there could be other ways to get those improvements done. Thank you for your time. I'm available for any questions, if anyone has any questions.
Yes, you raised the, raised the point of, the petition waivers were there when you acquired the finished lots internal to the subdivision. Can you think of a way that you could help us get rid of the petition and waiver process by incorporating some equivalent value into your individual price of the lot? In reading most of the letters, what I'm picking up is people are surprised. They don't know that that petition and waiver is there. They don't see it in their title report. But there's, there is a component, that if it was in their base lot price, it would be in their first transaction with you as building the homes. They wouldn't be surprised at a later date. If there was a way to come up with some equivalent value of what that petition and waiver is, would you support that being interjected when you sell the house for the first time?
Well, typically, these types of improvements are done when the development occurs. And so, that's, that's what's surprising to me, is that that did not occur with this. So, you know, like, the development for the first phase of North Creek, that frontage improvement would be done along, the frontage along Crocker, and there wouldn't be any form of an LID that would occur. I've seen oftentimes, there's various different mechanisms that can fund these. And I, I understand the frustration that the city might have in trying to find a way to come up with creative solutions, it's a very challenging position. But I've seen situations where funds are created, the capital funds for the improvements, or increased SDCs, transportation designated projects that those capital funds go to. You know, I would have, if we were developing those lots, I would have expected to be required as a condition of approval to do the frontage improvements along Crocker. And so, that's what I, typically what we would see, this wouldn't be an LID-type of situation.
Not to get into the point of testifying myself, but we had a previous counselor who sat here for many, many years. He was against the half-street improvements because he thought that, how do you design it so it matches grade? You don't have an overall master plan.
Right, right.
It creates some problems, and like in the first phase of this subdivision, it's a very narrow frontage on Crocker. So, you might have 250 feet of Crocker in fix. Now, next phase comes along, you might do 300 feet of Crocker. So, how do they match up, and how do they do that? And I think that's part of the not timely issue.
And I agree with that. You can't, I couldn't build the frontage for future alignments that you'd end up with sidewalk hanging out in the middle of there, and no one, no one would be pleased with that. But I think, instead of passing that on to the homebuyers and them being hit with a $7,000 fee, kind of blindsided with that, that, that should have been put on the developer, in my opinion. And that, and those funds go into some type of a fee or of a fund. That way, the homebuyer, that price, that cost is reflected in the home purchase. Unfortunately, at times past-
I would hope during this interim period between now and the 22nd, both you and Miles would take the opportunity to work with staff to maybe come up with those creative solutions, so we don't find ourselves in this pickle again.
Yeah, and I'd like to reiterate, you know, that, as Miles had mentioned, and Miles and Hayden Homes do business, we have a history. We have a history, a strong history in the City of Albany, and we respect the work that the city does. And we value our reputation and a concern for our customers, a concern for our homebuyers. Even though we've sold our homes in North Creek, we want to continue to do business in Albany and develop a strong reputation. And that's why we're here, because we're concerned about the impacts to our homebuyers. So, we value the opportunity to work with the city and hope to come up with creative solutions so that we can work with better solutions.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Actually, it was answered. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any other questions? Okay, all right, thank you. So, next is Mercedes Strowbridge. And after that is Harry Snoek.
My name's Mercedes Strowbridge, S.T.R.O.W.B.R.I.D.G.E. My address is 2658 Red Oak Street Northwest in the North Creek subdivision. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my husband, Jonathan Strowbridge. Sorry, nervous. We moved in a year ago. This is our first home. And we're both public school teachers. We bought a house within our means. We felt like we were making good choices. And this would be a really big financial hardship for us. We're both paying student loans, and the 80-plus dollars a month for 10 years that was listed as what would be anticipated is a lot. that was listed as what would be anticipated is a lot. I don't think that we should be assessed for areas of the road that we're not using. I especially don't understand being assessed for the Valley View portion. And I definitely agree with what's been said prior, that it's a disproportionate financial burden. I understand you're in a hard spot with this, and I know there's no easy solution that will please everybody, but I do appreciate that you're going to look at it some more, and I hope we can come up with a solution that works for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mercedes. Okay, and then Harry.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for this opportunity. Personally, I delivered a letter to the city manager on-
Could you spell your last name and your address?
Last name spelled S-N-O-E-K. Address is 2654 Northwest Kingston Way, Albany, Oregon, 97321. I just wanted to say I delivered a letter to the city manager on Monday, March 9th, that was accepted by somebody at the utilities department, and they said they would be giving it to you. And all I'd like to do is submit 35 signatures of people that are opposed to paying any type of assessment for the LID.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you, Harry. Next is Bill Root. And after Bill Root is Peggy Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Bill Root, R-O-O-T. I live at 2634 Northwest Valley View, one of the two properties that are being assessed for the Valley View. Before I begin, I want to make an announcement. I'm the chairman of the North Albany Neighborhood Association. Miles Bredner and Jeff Powers have agreed to be at our next meeting, which will be at 6:00 PM at Sadisi's Pizza Parlor, where we'll be able to talk to Miles and Jeff Powers about what is happening with the parks development and that part of it. Basically, I'm going to talk only about Valley View. I am opposed to the LID for that, for a couple of reasons. But I want to say something before I start on that. The, I was at the meeting, the Home Owners Association meeting that they had on Valley View some time ago, and made a comment, and it seems that the staff worked with those comments, and I want to thank staff for doing that. The original proposal was a sidewalk, and I was opposed to a sidewalk because a sidewalk, to me, is a six-inch wide piece of concrete that is a step up from the roadway. And I used that portion to back into, and I didn't want a sidewalk. What they came up with was a 10-foot-wide multi-use path within the right-of-way on the south side of Valley View Drive. I already have a 12-foot multi-use path in front of my property, so that's not a problem. My next-door neighbor, Mr. Perry, who's the other Valley View LID, also has a 15-foot paved in front of his property. So a 10-foot-wide multi-use path is not a problem for either one of us. As far as the park that is going to be donated to Benton County for the park, if they would have put the path through there that they're talking about, then it says in here that the LID for Valley View would be just dropped. And that's fine. I have no objection to that. I also want to go on record that I do not object to the cost, like a lot of other people do. $1,429 is going to break me, but it would be an additional part for a lot of people that are going to be assessed well over $4,000 in addition to that. So my suggestion is that the city just go ahead and drop the idea for the LID for Valley View, because it's not needed. It's, it would help the negotiation with the, between Miles Bredner and the county, because the county doesn't want to get stuck with the problem either. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Bill. Hey, Peggy.
Hello. My name's Peggy Johnson. I reside at 2649 Red Oak Street in the North Creek subdivision. J-O-H-N-S-O-N is my last name. I am opposed to this. One of the reasons is the cost to the homeowners. Most of my neighbors are young families with small children, and I have a few that are close to me that are my age. I'm on a fixed income, and some of my neighbors are, and this is very expensive, I'm thinking, and I would appreciate the people to research it some more and see where we can bring the costs down. Crocker does need to be fixed, but the amount that they're asking from some of my young neighbors and myself, being on a fixed income, it seems a bit extravagant. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Peggy. Next is Tim Harrington, and then after Tim is Christina Funky. Funk?
Hi. My name is Tim Harrington. I live at 2646 Northwest Kingston, and I'm here to oppose the development. The reason is, it's been addressed beautifully by previous people that have opposed this development, and mainly is because we are aware of the cost when we buy something. And when we purchase this property, the petition waiver, to me, was not, I was not aware of that. And the fact that we are being blindsided by this cost is, seems unreasonable and unfair. And the development, developers should have to pay for, as a rule, when a construction is being built, that they should include that cost and should be paying for it. And to pass on to a homeowner is, seems unfair and unethical. And what's happening to us seems unethical by what the city is doing to, as a homeowner. So that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Question?
Uh-huh.
Sir?
Oh, Tim. Yeah.
If the developer, I recognize that you're seeing yourself blindsided, but do you not think that the homeowner should pay for it at all, ever? Or just it should be included in the property when you first buy it?
No. Yeah, I think we should be aware, the developers should have had to pay for that in the first place, because I would have not moved into an area knowing that, if I had known the cost before, I could have included that in my financials.
Right, okay. I see.
Yeah. But that, the fact that we are being blindsided by this extra cost from something that we were never aware of in the first place. And then, as it is, I moved into that development because I liked the property and the way, as it was. I didn't expect that somebody was going to develop that area and increase the cost and pass it on to us.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. And then Christina and Raymond. Okay, it looks like, yeah.
My name is Raymond Funk, F-U-N-K-E, and I live at 2526 Northwest White Oak Avenue. And I am opposed to the LID. My biggest thing is the cost of assessment to us. It just seems like a high cost at this time. I'd like to see in the future if we could, if you guys could work out a way where it would be a lower cost, it'd be, make more sense to me. So I'm opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Christina didn't, you're speaking for Christina, too?
Correct.
Okay. Actually, Debbie Berg was down, but I believe she was with the Human Relations Commission, so unless Debbie Berg wanted to speak. Okay, next is Robert Sams, and then Eric Swanson.
Robert Sams, S-A-M-S. I live at 2662 Northwest Kingston Way. Formerly, 20 years, I lived at 2547 Northwest Crocker Lane. So I've seen the increases in Crocker Lane. I've also seen the maintenance that's been done on Crocker from the city of Albany and Benton County, which includes and is totally limited to the striping. In the 20 years I lived there, there's never been anything done to that street. A few potholes patched, and so the deterioration of that is from the city of Albany and Benton County from not maintaining that. And I don't know how long it was before I moved in that that was all put in. It was all done identical to the way it is 20 years ago. I believe the city rolled the dice on the initial developer I set in this room at the hearings in regard to North Creek. And when the city did not require the developer to either post bond or pay their fair share for the improvements for what they did, and then said on Phase Two, you're going to be able to put it all in, they went broke. The city didn't make them post bond, did not get any financial obligation, and I feel that now the city is coming back to the people that have paid in that neighborhood. I know my house had $14,000 worth of building permits that went to the city. And I know the city's interested in the development going in so they can get the revenue from the other 82 houses or 100 and some houses, whatever they do. The transportation experts stated that the trips are going to double on Crocker based on that subdivision. At this point, Crocker is sufficient for the people that live in that area. If the developer's going to create double the trips that's working on that road, then it's his responsibility to build that road. And if he can do it for half the price as a private deal, then I say let him do it. Also, at the early hearings before that went in, there was a discussion that the city had the funds and everything for a traffic light at Gibson and Crocker Lane. And I don't know if the city still has those funds. They said it was there and able to be put in as soon as there was the amount of trips and amount of traffic on that road to warrant a light. I would say it warrants a light. They couldn't find other streets around that have that much traffic. I think that it's time for the city to step up and take care of that whole street. I don't think if it was a more fair cost to the homeowners, but I can't see that we're maybe 5% or 10% of the traffic that's on that, and going to reach that as a benefit. I feel the city is, and the county are at fault for letting this all go to this point, now that you're running out of authorization, that you want to slap a big fine on us, so to speak, and the taxation of it. Thank you.
Eric?
Hi, I'm Eric Swanson, S-W-A-N-S-O-N. I live at 2400 Northwest White Oak. We lived there about a year, and we moved there to get a bigger house to take care of our foster son, who had stepped on an IED in Afghanistan and had terminal liver cancer. He actually just passed away last week. We just had his funeral. Very expensive funeral, but it honored him, and it honored his family. But to have a, up to a $10,000 assessment, when we bought the house, knowing we could afford it going forward, but to add an additional $10,000, really puts in question, can we afford the house? You know, and we do foster care. We give to our community. And to be put in this position seems very unfair when the cost should have been upfront by the developer, not after the fact, not to be blindsided by it. None of us that have moved in are realtors. Even if we knew what we were looking at, we wouldn't know how much that could have been. It's a very unfair way of proceeding with, you know, the people in that community. And I would ask that, not only for this community, but for future communities, that you don't do that to people. It is unfair. Ask yourself, you know, if you were moving to a new house, would you have $10,000 right after you moved in? You're pretty much spending every penny you have to stretch for that little bit better life. You know, and there's a perception that North Albany, that everyone's well-to-do. It's not the case. Most people are stretching to be there. And so I would just ask you to consider that, you know, I'm willing to pay my fair share, but it sounds very disproportionate that we would pay for sidewalks that we are not going to use. We already have sidewalks. We paid for them. So I want to go on record as being opposed to this, but I would also state that if there was a very fair and reasonable offer that we were allowed to vote on, then I would be in favor of that. But to push this through at the last minute seems very, very unfair. So, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, next is Cheryl Kirkpatrick. Kirkpatrick. Is she here? Maybe she left. Maybe the clapping drove her away. No, I do have to kind of say, you know, I've been up here a long time, and part of our rules of conduct on the agenda does say of no clapping. When we've mentioned it before, everybody has always abided by it and been respectful on that, so just take that in-
We're pretty proud of each other trying to say it.
Okay, yeah. And we-
You don't have to say it, do you?
Right, no. And-
That's right.
Right. And so, sir, I think maybe, we'll see if everyone's going to be respectful. I mean, I don't think you want to upset the council here, so. Okay, next is, no, sir. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Daniel Hooser Hyde. So he must have left. And Rachel Haggerty. Okay. And then after Rachel is Emily Franson-Jones. Is she here, too? Okay, Rachel.
Hello, I'm Rachel Haggerty, H-A-G-G-E-R-T-Y. Thank you, Mayor and other elected officials for letting me speak. I speak on behalf of my household. We are two students trying to make our way. My husband's getting his PhD in physics. I'm getting my master's in Student Affairs and Higher Education. Combined, we have $125,000 worth of student loans. We're trying to live the American dream. We just bought our first home. Apartments in Corvallis are $1,000 a month for 900 square feet, living in slums with other students. So we moved to North Albany in order to have a decent place for us to live while we continue our education. My husband wants to be a professor, and I obviously want to continue my work in higher education. These things are important. Having an American dream, which is a house typically, according to American traditions, is important to us. So I'd just like to remind you all, as elected officials, that you are here because we have chosen you to represent us. So I understand that you feel that this is a judicial hearing, but just also want to point out that we have voices, and you are the leaders of our voices, and just to take that into consideration. We are definitely opposed to this. As students, we're on a fixed income, so everything was budgeted very, very carefully. We chose Hayden Homes because it fit into our budget and because we are able to qualify with all of our student loans to have a mortgage. Our mortgage is less than our rent would have been in Corvallis. So just to let you know the benefits of being able to live where we do live. So, thank you very much for your time and your patience during all this. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Rachel. Okay, Emily Franson-Jones. And she must have. Okay. Okay, that is it. Who signed up? So, was there anyone else that would like to speak? So, yes.
All right. So, my name is Mark Mostek, M-O-S-T-E-K. I live at 2654 Northwest Red Oak Street in the North Creek Development. Kind of one of the original homeowners in that development when it was back in Albilly Light and then Hayden came in and bought it over. So, we've been there about five years now. We've seen how everything has been developing in that area. I do go up and down, like I'll run that whole entire area. So, I mean, I do understand the need for the road to be done. But is it fair to assess just this group of homeowners? No. I see tons of traffic, you know. Granted, they made the statistics saying four thousand people are going up and down this road. Did they take into consideration all the work trucks, all the workers, all the people that don't live in this development that are up and down, up and down, up and down, going to lunch, coming, you know, to and from, making deliveries? Do they take that into consideration? Can we reevaluate this? Do they take into consideration the D.R. Horton Development that's going in? It's a couple hundred homes, probably at this point. They use that road. I see this all the time. We're not the only ones using this road. Is it fair to us? No. Is it fair to say that we need to do this? Yes, it is. But you need to take in a broader pull. Why is not the north end of Valley View being taken into consideration? Why are we the ones picking up Valley View? We have no obligation to that road whatsoever. So, my thoughts is convene, pull more people in. You know, like I said, D.R. Horton, I see all those people coming up Crocker because it's one of the main thoroughfares. So, people come up, they go on Squire, they go home to the D.R. Horton Development. They avoid our area. Why are we the only ones being assessed? That's my main question. Like I said, I understand the need to improve roads. That's just the necessity of the beast. You guys have to do something to be able to help pay for it. You guys can't take all that on yourselves, but help us out with the costs. You know, assess all the people in North Albany that actually do use this road, not just us. That's all I have to say. So, on record, I am opposed.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. And then the gentleman in the red in the back could be next.
My name's Judy Foster, F-O-S-T-E-R. And my mother owns a home, so I'm here for her. She is very old and just lives by herself. And she's on a fixed income, and I don't know how I'm going to tell her that she has to come up with this money.
To her address?
Twenty-six forty-five Red Oak. And so, I would just like to be on record that I oppose it for her and for myself.
Thank you.
My name's Mark Langford, L-A-N-K-F-O-R-D. New to the North Creek subdivision at 2300 Closer Oak. I just moved in two weeks ago, got greeted to the neighborhood with a letter. And I oppose to this LID. I believe it should have been handled by the developer or Hayden Homes, whoever picked up and finished this project. I think they should do the right thing and take care of it with the other development. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, sir. And then the lady in the orange.
Good evening. My name is Scott Palmer, P-A-L-M-E-R. I live on 2660 Northwest Brianna Street in the Hayden Home Development. I'm here on behalf of myself and my wife, Heather Banks, also the same address, obviously. We're in a, we're opposition of this LID. One of my big glaring things that I don't think anybody's ever come up with yet, but the new developer, the MBBH, they're getting assessed this fee now, where Hayden didn't add it into the cost of their homes. This guy surely will add it into whoever buys those homes. He's paying it upfront right now, but he's getting all that money back on the end where we didn't get that luxury. And that seems very unfair to us that are in this development currently. That being said, we moved from Salem down to here for a better life for our son. My wife is a stay-at-home mom, and I've been very fortunate that she's been allowed to do so. But that being said also, I don't have a lot of money. Being a single income, I drive to Woodburn and back every day to go to work. Gas prices aren't cheap. I can't afford to buy a commuter car. I'm doing everything I can to keep my family in food, clothes, and the necessities. But then to be handed down this ten thousand dollar fine or fee, it's ridiculous. There's no way I can afford this. And I don't know what you're going to do. You're going to garnish wages, whatever you're going to do to make this happen. You're going to make me lose my house to pay for this road that nobody here uses. I don't drive up there. I drive north every day. I don't go that way, ever. I go south, down Crocker, Gibson, and out through Albany and hit I-5. It seems ridiculous that we should be forced to pay for something we're not using. I run that road too. I don't have a problem with it. It's a wide enough area coming up Crocker for me to run on. I run way on the country. That's one of the bonuses of living here. I get to run in the country. I get to start as soon as I leave my neighborhood. It's wonderful. I'd like to keep it that way. I moved out of the city to this area for this reason. We wanted to be in North Albany because of the country feel, because of the community, being close to Corvallis. That was our whole point of being here. But having this fee assessed upon us is going to force me out. I'm not going to have a choice. So, again, I'm opposed.
All right, thank you, Scott. You made a good point too. Thank you. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Uh, thank you for letting us speak tonight. My name is Cindy LaFawn. Today was the first day in our new house, 2663 Red Oak. I hope I have the address right, being new. Couple of questions. Where is the county in all of this? We have heard the city has assessed a fee. It is a county road. What is the county contributing, if anything, and are they going to contribute? Second question is, why not an equal formula for all residents? I understand that of the fifteen hundred people that drive this road, some of them have already paid. Was their formula equal to the formula we are currently assessed at? And if not, could the formula be equal across the board instead of a different formula for us in North Creek? Third is a comment. We are assessed at nine thousand dollars for twenty-one hundred feet. I can take three steps at four hundred dollars a foot, and I've just spent twelve hundred dollars. That should be made out of pure gold. Thank you.
So, Cindy, did you say you just moved in today to the neighborhood?
Yes. We just signed the papers. Today is our first day here.
So, were you told about the waiver remonstrance before you signed?
There was a waiver petition in the Hayden paperwork. We asked if there was any pending work on Crocker. They did not know of any at the time. We initially signed back in early January, I believe it was. The petition waiver was very vague. It said we could not remonstrate against the waiver itself, but we could remonstrate against the assessment, which is why we are all here. There were no numbers attached to that assessment. We are in the nineteenth year of that petition waiver. I think most of us assumed the petition waiver was going to die a death until we got this paperwork saying we were going to be assessed.
Yeah, I would have thought just purchasing the home just recently, it'd have been more information because we started this process sort of months ago. So, it wasn't just some, you know, something-
We initially got the paperwork. I think most of the people in the neighborhood got it by registered mail. Because last Thursday, because we were not officially neighbors yet, today being our first day, we received a notice of it by email from Aaron. I don't remember how many pages long it was. And we went through that process, but that has been less than a week that we received it. So, you can imagine our surprise signing papers on a nine thousand dollar debt on top of the page we just, the property we just paid for. Plus, we called the county courthouse to see what our taxes were going to run. We were quoted about three thousand at the time we signed papers. The county courthouse said forty-five hundred is more like what we're going to be paying. And we're trying to live the retired dream here, and this is getting ridiculous. So.
Yeah, yeah, I would have thought the realtor would have told you something because this has been sort of in the news for a while, but yeah, I'm sorry that happened.
I am too, and I'm not sure the realtor knew how much was going on either because listening to all the comments tonight, I think this property has been up, down, bankrupt, back, forth. I think a lot of balls were dropped before all this came about, and I think they're all bouncing on us.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Cindy, for the information. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak? So. Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, all right. So, I'm not seeing anyone else that wanted to speak or, or yes, okay?
My name's Mike Martaler. Last name is M-A-R-T-H-A-L-L-E-R. I live at 2502 White Oak Avenue. I just want to go on the record to say I am opposed to this. My family and I came down here almost three years ago. Ended up falling in love with North Albany. So, we decided to build a house. We picked North Creek. Moved in there almost two years ago. I drive a hundred and thirty miles every day to work and back just so my family can live here because we love the area. My wife is a full-time medical student. I have children that love to play every possible sport you can think of. Getting blindsided almost two years later with another ten thousand dollar fee is just absolutely ridiculous. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Mike. And sir, did you want to speak? Because you stood up earlier in the meeting.
Oh, I, so I just had a comment.
Okay, you'll need to come to the podium. Yeah, tape recorder needs to pick you up.
My name is Rodney Wyatt. I live at 2673 Red Oak. My last name is W-Y-A-T-T. I just had a comment because our, our city attorney said this is all about getting the facts before any decision is made. It's not about what people's comments or that kind of thing. It's all about the facts. But in the letter that we got from our city manager, it lists that there was a Bloom Lane LID. The Bloom Lane LID was abandoned or stopped because of the neighborhood came out against it. And that was the reason, and I can quote right from the letter, that that's the reason that it was dropped. So, that's kind of the reason that we're here, to kind of get the same thing to happen. And so, it's not just about the facts. It was about the whole neighborhood came out in opposition and the high cost. So, those two factors, and you have both of those factors here today. So.
And that's what this process is about.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, anyone else that would like to say anything else on this item? Okay, all right. So, the hearing will be continued. Is there questions that you have of staff? Or did staff want to address anything of any testimony? Or did you want to wait and put it into a report?
If, we're happy to answer council questions, but it might be more constructive for staff to provide you with a list of questions that we've heard and written answers prior to your April twenty-second meeting. But we can do what the council would like.
I have a question just for edification on my part. If somebody gets a bill that's seven thousand, ten thousand dollars, whatever it is, is that something that's due and payable on that bill? Or is that something that's prorated monthly over X amount of years?
Stuart, did you want to?
Yeah, yeah. If I could make a couple of points of clarification. One, I mean, that's what this process is about. Nobody has been assessed anything at this point and wouldn't be until down the road, as it was explained earlier. I think what people justifiably are concerned about is that, you know, a couple of years from now, they're going to get a bill that could range from, you know, four to- depending, and a lot of that depends on how much resources the city council would choose to include in this particular LID if you choose to form the LID at all, which is still up in the air. But as to your question, there is a payment plan. There is an interest charge associated with the payment plan, yes.
Is that usually about ten years?
Stuart, yeah, I think that's it.
In Albany, it's typically been ten years. It can be longer under state statute.
Question? These folks ask questions. When are they going to be able to hear the answers?
That's what Mark was mentioning.
Yeah, but that would come back to us.
Well, but it would be in, in the public record, and we can make that known. Post it on our, our website, the, the council packet. So, anything that comes to the council is public information. Generally, those packets come out the Friday before the meeting. I think is when council gets those packets.
So, the, the meeting that it would be is what date?
April twenty-second, I think is what I heard.
So, people could go on the Friday before April twenty-second and see that online, see the answers to the questions. So, if you then had more questions or whatever, it would-
Yeah. I have a, yeah, a public hearing still open. Sure, you'll have to come forward so the tape recorder can pick up.
So, what I'm hearing is all the stuff that we asked this evening, we're not going to know anything until April twentieth. Is that what I'm hearing? We're not going to get-
Oh, neither.
There's, there's no open forum? There's no running dialogue on a website somewhere that we can check in and, and look at? That's, that's just completely closed door to me. That's, that's backwards as all get out to me.
Well, for the record, people can submit information at any point. If you have a question or want to talk to city staff, that's-
But what you guys are answering on these questions, we won't know the answers of them until the twentieth. There's no running dialogue on any forum online that we can see.
Well, we haven't set up, I, I don't know that there's any way to manage a, a public hearing process through like a chat room or something like that.
It's, it's a public forum online. It's like this online. It's not complicated.
So, what will be what we're saying is all the questions that everybody raised this evening. So, staff's been, you know, writing them down. They will come up with answers to all of them. So, before April twenty-second meeting, probably that Friday before, it'll be submitted in the council packet. It'll all be online. You'll be able to read all those questions and the answers, and then the record's left open. So, April twenty-second, then you can come and you can be able to comment some more if you had any more, you know, questions on that.
Okay, I, I get that.
But before this time-
I can understand that because I was already stated. I, I can understand April twenty-second and the twentieth. I get that. So, well, my issue is we have to wait over a month to get any kind of feedback whatsoever about what's being done with our financial futures.
There's no decision. There's nothing being done. We're just gathering information. If you have questions of staff at any point, you can certainly raise those questions and call City Hall, talk to me.
I, I get that.
Will you turn off that horrible thing over there?
Is it the hand?
It's off. I, I get that, but what I'm saying is open book kind of a deal where we know where your guys' discussions are, where we know what's going on. That's what I'm getting at. That's what I'm trying to get at. I know not everybody can get down to city council meetings. I burned a sick day to be here tonight. I work swings on the twenty-second. Guess what? Burn another sick day. I ain't got a lot of sick days to burn.
Right.
But I'm, I'm losing money tonight to be here.
Yeah.
I wasted vacation, or sick day to be here.
So, so this is kind of-
I'm doing it on the twenty-second as well.
Right, and this is kind of a part of the process. It's not one that, you know, we want to be able to get input. So, I mean, I guess if it's, if you're wanting a decision, that's not what everybody was told here this evening. A lot of them have left. We weren't ready for the decision. We're ready for more input, and we're hoping to be able to maybe see if we can work out with another-
Am I not making sense? I'm not looking for a decision right now. I'm looking for some form of open book so we can see what's going on at the current time.
Yeah, go ahead.
Some updates for, during this month that we're waiting. That's what I'm asking for. I'm not asking for a decision to be handed down right now. I want to be able to see on any given day where this decision is because it doesn't affect your guys' financial pocketbooks. It affects ours, everyone else in this room. It affects them, not any of you.
Right.
So, it's a big deal to us. We've got a lot hanging over our head, and I want to see what's going on on a daily basis.
So, sir, we'll, we'll see. We'll work with staff, see if we can be able to do some sort of update over the process on our website.
So, I'm asking.
Just periodically, you can check it. Okay, thank you.
Let's hear from Jim.
Well, but one thing you need to understand, sir, is that the council is a deliberative body, which means that there is no one person here who can answer the questions. Many of the questions are, I don't want to say argumentative because that, that casts a negative spin. I don't mean it that way at all. What I mean is they're debatable. You could say one side. You could say another. You could, you could disagree about them. There's seven votes here, no one of which has decided how they're- one of which has decided how they're going to vote, so there is no one city person to give you a city answer on anything. What Councilor Collins has done in his motion, and the council has adopted it, is one of the things that's going to happen between now and that next hearing, is staff is supposed to go out and try to figure out, basically, other ways to address the concerns you've raised. Nobody knows right now how to address it. The reality is, if everybody knew how to answer your questions right now, this would be a phony hearing, because it would mean that we'd all known in advance what all the concerns and issues are. And people actually do listen, and want to try to figure out, what can we do to address those with the resources we have, and what other ways are there to do it? And so it has to be a process that takes time to do.
And get the, I have to make it, and what I'm asking for is an open book, an open door.
Sir, we won't be discussing any more of this item at this, this body will not be discussing the item until it comes to that April 22nd. So everything is just input being brought in, working, staff will be working to see if we can come up with some alternative solutions, but this body will not be discussing it till April 22nd.
All the meetings are public.
Yeah.
That's one of the reasons that, when I mentioned early on, that I didn't respond to the emails, other than say thank you, and hope you can attend the meeting. We aren't allowed to have discussions outside of a public meeting setting.
Right.
You and I can certainly talk, but you and I aren't going to make any decisions.
Yeah, I know what he means.
Okay, so with that, I think that it'll be for April 22nd, and we will try to get as much information as we can on our website, updating on the process.
I think what this boils down to is, it's a really tough problem, and we're asking staff to go back and see if they can bring us a better solution. Then we're going to continue the hearing, and hopefully hear a better solution.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you for attending, yeah. Floyd?
The information staff brings back, as I remember state statute on local improvement districts, there are provisions for seniors, that any assessment that might occur can be deferred until the property transfers. So the lady who spoke to us tonight about her senior mother, if we ever had an LID, and the lien was made, that lien does not have to be paid until the property transfers, if she qualifies.
Well, there was a program through the state for that. It was discontinued for lack of funding in 2011. If the council chose, you could develop your own deferred assessment process. You'd have to figure out how to finance that, and it has been done by previous councils for previous LIDs.
So it was both seniors and income-driven?
That is correct for the state system.
For the state, that's no longer there.
Could be whatever we decided.
Right, and also, one lady had talked about the interest rate. Stuart, is the interest rate our choice?
The interest rate is referred to in the state statute as the most recent bonding rate, so it gives a guideline, but it doesn't state a specific rate. There is some flexibility in that definition.
So the number that I heard was six and a half? So if we have a bond sale, and it comes in at 3%, we can extend that 3% to the financing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Is that it, Cassie?
I just want to make a comment. For one thing, unless you all throw tomatoes and stuff, no matter what you say at our meetings and stuff, it doesn't upset me, because we're here to listen to you. This waiver of remonstrance, I used to work in the assessor's office, and I went to a title company, because we dealt with this a lot. People came in and says, you know, hey, you know, I can't, I didn't know about this. And I went to a title company, and I said, why don't you tell people about these things, because it affects them? I mean, not everybody has $10,000. And I was told point-blank, it's not my job. So I would say, I mean, this is just my opinion, not the council's or anything, that somehow the, need to talk to your legislators, legislators and get it changed, somehow to get something like this brought out, rather than kind of hidden in the fine print. Because I just think it's wrong. I mean, I got hit with it years ago, but I was lucky enough that I didn't have to pay until we sold our house. They just kind of did it, and we didn't even get, you know, but anyway, so I just want you to know that I understand what you're saying, because I think it's just really bad that you have to find out about it this way. I'm sorry that we have to fund this way, and someone mentioned a gas tax. I don't know, I don't know if it's ever, you know, if people would go for that. That'd be a great way to do it, so that people wouldn't have to put up with this. But, so there's a lot of ideas, and I know this is a public hearing, but as a comment, I just wanted to let you know that I agree with you totally. I just, I really don't care for LIDs, but at least, at least you should know ahead of time what's going on, especially the lady who moved in the same today. You know, it's like, welcome to the neighborhood. Yeah, so anyway, you know, just keep your comments coming, and we'll see, you know, we'll do the best we can. We really will.
All right, I think that's it for this item, and we will see you folks on April 22nd, and thank you for attending, and we will take a five-minute break.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Maybe, I'm not sure if I'm coming...
That would have been that period.
You use the feeder street, I mean, they are one of very few. He was established at what?
Bill was wondering in the back of the room. I think he left in...
Started, folks, and we're missing a couple of councillors. Bill?
I don't use a gabber.
It'd be good for you.
Can you grab Stacy, Mary?
I shouldn't.
I think she's alcoholic.
Bill. Take the goat.
We'll get going.
Yeah, but you can get...
Okay, oh wait, we still have business from the public to do. But I don't know if there, I don't think there's anybody here. Is there anyone here from business from the public that'd like to bring an item forward? Anyone from business from the public? Okay, not seeing one. All right, Stacy? Or no, actually...
You know, third time's a charm.
It is your turn. We have an adoption of a resolution on page 24.
Move adoption of resolution?
That's a supplemental budget.
Stuart, all right.
Okay.
Second.
All right, second. And any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, and next, council, you have adoption of a consent calendar, and you have a revised, which, this is on your revised agenda. There's two, approved, two minutes that were in your packet.
Move adoption of the consent calendar. Second?
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, and then award of contract. So this one is, Stuart, did you want to talk about this one? On page 37.
I'll just remind the council, in January, I brought a one-year extension of this contract to the city council. We forwarded that to Piper Jaffrey. They had some changes they wanted to make to the contract, and they were substantial enough that, as Jim and I met, it was kind of my determination on the discussions, that we would be better off bringing a complete contract back to the city council. The original contract dates back about eight years at this point. The original contract with our financial advisor was with regional financial advisors. It then was transferred to Seattle Northwest Securities, and then from Seattle Northwest Securities to Piper Jaffrey. So the current negotiation was with Piper Jaffrey, and we wanted to, some, there were three provisions on the contract that were outlined in the staff report, that we wanted to discuss and renegotiate, and felt it would be better in a new contract. Contracts for the, related to issuing of bonds are exempt under competitive process and Oregon purchasing rules, and so that's the, the statutes are identified in the staff report, and we'd recommend going forward with the contract, so we can continue service with the same financial advisors that we've had.
Okay, questions?
I do have one question. On page 45, where it lists the financing type and the amount of enumeration for each, so that's independent of the size of the issue. It says a general obligation bond, public offering $38,000. Doesn't matter whether it's a $3 million bond, or a $30 million bond?
That's correct.
So using our recent discussion, if we were looking at two votes instead of one, we'd be paying double that standard fee.
That's correct.
Thank you. Move for adoption of contract? Second.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried, and next, Stacy. How's your item for the Albany Road reconstruction?
Your honor, I need to declare a conflict of interest. The company I work for will be involved with this project, and based on the email that came from Mark today, maybe, or somebody, Jeff, did you send it out, that somebody from K&amp;E could be here, I have confirmed that both K&amp;E and the second bidder, Emery &amp; Sons, used our price. So I will recuse myself and leave the dais from any conversation.
Right, okay, Stacy?
Hi, good evening, mayor, councillors. I'm here to provide a summary of staff's award recommendation for the North Albany Road reconstruction project. We received six bids for this project, ranging from approximately $6.1 million to $7.8 million. The engineer's estimate was $5.8 million. K&amp;E Excavating was the apparent low bidder, however, their bid was determined to be non-responsive, and staff is recommending that the project be awarded to the next low bidder, which is Emery &amp; Sons Construction of Salton, Oregon. So this evening, I am going to provide some clarification on how we came to this determination, and then following that, if council has, has questions, I will attempt to answer all of your questions. Before getting started, I did want to provide just a brief description on what improvements will be included with the North Albany Road project. North Albany Road reconstruction project is going to include full-width improvements to urban standards, curb and gutter, sidewalk, bike lanes. There's going to be a center turn lane added, and it's going to be from the railroad tracks to just north of Quarry Road. There's also going to be a new bridge constructed over Thornton Lake. West Thornton Lake Drive is going to be realigned, so that it connects to the North Albany Middle School entrance, where the traffic signal is located. And then the road's also going to be raised to provide emergency vehicles access in the event of a major flood. And the project's also going to include construction of around 3,800 feet of 30-inch diameter HTPE waterline. And if you remember, this, this waterline is going to complete the last phase of the Broadway Transmission Main Project, which I believe was started a couple of years ago, and it'll complete the connection between Albany, south of the Willamette River, to the Broadway Reservoir. So in staff's award memo, we... So in staff's award memo, we do discuss that K&amp;E's bid proposal was determined to be non-responsive. And we made this determination because they failed to meet the minimum HDP experience requirements. All bidders were required to submit an HDP experience form with their bids. The form included three parts. There was a superintendent experience requirement, a contractor experience requirement, and then a pipe fusion technician experience requirement. And you have to meet all three parts. You can't meet two and not the other in order to be considered responsive. Staff felt that this experience requirement was critical to the success of this project. HDP pipe material is different from, from other pipe that we typically see on projects like ductile iron and PVC. One of the way the materials is different is especially with large diameter. This pipe's going to be 30 inches in diameter. It's very heavy. It weighs over 100 pounds per foot. The pipe comes in 50-foot lengths instead of 18 or 20-foot lengths. That's what you see with ductile iron pipe. So when a contractor, oh, and the other thing is this pipe is fused together. So instead of installing, you know, an 18-foot length of pipe in a trench that you connect with a gasket joint, you're dragging a 200 to 300-foot long pipe segment and installing it in the trench. So this pipe's going to weigh between 10 and 15 tons. So you have to have a superintendent, a contractor, and somebody fusing, fusing the joints together that know what they're doing. Otherwise, it can be a disaster. The pipe does require special handling straps and equipment to avoid damaging the pipe. And lastly, I guess, I just want to mention again that this pipe does complete that connection between South Albany and the Broadway Reservoir, which we really thought was critical. Broadway Reservoir is the largest reservoir, provides drinking water for all of South Albany, and is the reservoir that we identified as providing emergency water for fire protection in the event of some sort of a disaster. I have to have notes so I remember everything here. So when we were looking at the HDP experience form, I mentioned it is three-part, so it requires demonstration of minimum experience in all three parts. Again, it's the contractor, the superintendent, and the pipe technician. K&amp;E Excavating submitted an experience form that listed OXPO Construction to fulfill the contractor minimum experience and the superintendent minimum experience. After the bids were open, we did receive a request from Emery &amp; Sons to review K&amp;E's bid proposal. And they posed the question, why if OXPO Construction is listed as K&amp;E subcontractor, aren't they included on their subcontractor disclosure forms? And so what those are is if you have a subcontractor that the value of the contract is 5% of the total project or $15,000, whichever is greater, contracting rules require that you disclose that contractor in your bid proposal. When we asked K&amp;E Excavating that question, they explained to staff that OXPO Construction was not on their first-tier forms because their total contract value did not meet the first-tier requirements. They further explained they did not plan to hire OXPO to install the pipe. They planned to hire one person from OXPO to meet both the contractor and the superintendent requirements. This was their approach. They were intending to submit just one person to meet both, both requirements. When we did review the bid proposals, all the other bidders that submitted a subcontractor as meeting the experience requirement for a subcontractor and a contractor, they did list these subs on their first-tier forms. We reviewed the bid protests submitted by K&amp;E Excavation, Excavating, and as we noted in the response council, I think was emailed last evening, we still find that our original determination that the approach K&amp;E Excavating used to meet the minimum experience requirements for installing the large diameter pipe is not acceptable. And, and also that it provides an unfair competitive advantage to K&amp;E over the other bidders. Staff did consult with the city attorney in making this determination. And basically, we just came to the same summary. K&amp;E is proposing to hire an individual from OXPO Construction as a subcontractor to meet the minimum experience requirements. But by definition, in our standard specifications, when a subcontractor contracts with a contractor, it's to do work. And we feel that this isn't happening here. The OXPO Construction is not going to install the pipe. And we further determine that if they hire a superintendent, the superintendent from OXPO isn't supervising their crew. So we don't see how they can meet the minimum experience requirement there as well. You know, we did come to this determination after a lot of discussion. We recognize that it comes at a cost, but we do feel that, you know, reviewing the contract and the, the contracting laws, that this was a determination that had to be made to make sure that the bidding, bidding field remains fair. You know, there are funds available to construct the project and we feel that the bid submitted in response to our contract are representative of the work included in the contract. So with that, are there any, any questions from council?
Rich, then Floyd.
Is there any evidence that K&amp;D, K&amp;E, KND? K&amp;E could not do the work? When, when they, when they say, when you say you have to have a supervisor, they say they're going to have a supervisor and the supervisor is someone who has done it before. I mean, obviously, they must have the operator available because that's the person who actually does the, I presume, the plastic weld.
In their bid proposal that they submitted in response to the contract, their, their form that they submitted for the HDP experience requirement, they did not list themselves as self-performing the work. So, you know, they, I don't know that they have the staff equipment to, to, to complete the work. They submitted that OXPO Construction was going to be doing the work, which is odd because they aren't, you know, so I don't know if that answered your question.
Yeah, and I think the point is that they did not meet the standards we set out for demonstrating their experience.
And how many, how many dollars are we spending extra?
The cost, I believe, is about $300,000. But the issue is, we wouldn't, without someone filling out those documents, we can't determine whether anyone else is qualified. To say, can you do the work? We set qualifications for what we want for experience, and so you need to be able to demonstrate that you have that experience. You know, so they, they don't meet that and it, it gave them an unfair bidding advantage over the other contractors.
Beyond that, Stacy, you can correct, please correct me if you think I misstated anything. It's my understanding that K&amp;E Excavating as, as, as an entity did not have the experience, that K&amp;E Excavating has not met the minimum requirements that we had in our, in our project, and, excuse me, in our bid documents for this project. And that they did not propose to have anyone supervising or running the, participating on that crew that met that experience. There was other people within the company that they said had some experience, but they weren't, while they worked for other contractors, but they weren't proposing them on this project. Essentially, what was happening, it was they were hiring, this, this is my interpretation, they were hiring this superintendent from another company to essentially train their crew in installing it on this project. I'm very uncomfortable with that. It is, Stacy, for all the reasons Stacy mentioned about the complexities of working with the pipe, this is going to an 8-million-gallon reservoir. It's the largest reservoir in our system. It is an extremely large diameter water line. And it is, it is the last piece to be able to effectively get the water we need in the summertime to meet demands and keep the water fresh and safe to drink in the wintertime. And I, I think that that piece of water line is extremely important and helps justify the need for the experience to construct the pipe.
Is the pipe tested after it's put in?
Absolutely.
I don't see the problem.
So is this the same pipe that we just did the project underneath the Willamette River then?
Correct.
Just to connect up to the tower?
Right. And we don't put these sorts of requirements on every contractor or every contract, but on the contracts where there are specific risks, we do. Another.
I understand. My issue is basic fairness. This is, and, and it's a fight that I have with American Welding Society. I was on their board for 14 years. Let's, let's have a standard that someone talks about instead of a standard that someone does. In America, we have been a country where if you can do the job, that makes you golden. That's what makes you good. Not whether or not you can talk about it. Not whether or not someone says they like your job at doing it. Or whether or not you've done it before. If you can do it this time, that makes you golden. If it is tested, and if it's tested, you know, so it, there's no question, then it's going to work. That's the issue that I have with this. I understand you have bidding law and all that, you know, whatever that is, that's just plain flat ass wrong.
So one of the other reasons that I was getting to on why we thought it was crucial to have this requirement is this is an integral part of the construction of North Albany Road, and that project is very schedule intense. We're going to be closing North Albany Road, and if the contractor has issues with installing this pipe, it's going to delay the road construction, and that could lapse into when school starts. The contractor's on a very tight timeframe. So it wasn't just about the pipe. That's very important, but it's the overall project and the potential impacts to that project.
But also, Mark, though, if you, if you change the actual criteria at all and, and don't, and go ahead and accept the low bidder when they're not meeting criteria, then we have to go back out again for bid to have an even playing field with everybody else that they wouldn't have had to go through that certification too. So I understand, counselor, you know, your concern on it, but then we would end up having to go back out and allow everybody else to do the same thing.
It depends whether or not you have a standard that is functional or if you have a standard that is picked. And we, we object to the way they met the standard, is what I'm hearing.
No.
No, they didn't meet the standard.
They didn't meet the standard.
If you have someone on site who does it, you've met the standard.
That wasn't the standard we promulgated. You could argue, and it's a legitimate question, that we should have had a different standard. But that was not the standard we promulgated in our specs.
Okay, I give up.
Floyd?
It appears to me we have a couple of options. We can either award as staff has suggested, or we could reject all bids and re-advertise. I'd like to know what the consequences of re-advertising and rebidding is.
The project likely would not be constructed this summer just because of the, the timing. If we tried to bid it for construction this summer, while I don't have a crystal ball, I could just about guarantee you that you're going to pay a premium because contractors are filling up their schedules. What we've seen in the engineering news record, which tracks construction costs, I believe last year, the year-over-year increase was about 7%. So there's a good chance that we'd be paying another 7%, 6, 7, 8% if we delay to build the following summer.
So 7% on the base bid would be $320,000 more, just everything else being equal, just the cost of inflation. I think the timing, the timing question in North Albany, this is a project that's been delayed two years already because of requiring standards, I mean, requiring us to get permits from everybody. You know, there's utility work out there going on now in preparation of that. The school's already participated in trying to identify the closure, so we avoid the impacts to them. The community's been notified.
We have a neighborhood meeting scheduled tomorrow.
Yeah, there's expectations out there. Well, I'm probably one of the first that would like to save as much money as I can. I also look at the, the bid tab, and I see that there are five contractors who follow the rules. And there's one contractor who chose not to. And I don't know how to play fair when five people say, I'm playing by the rules, and one says, I'm not.
Your honor? Stacy, is there, is there an appeal process? I mean, if we choose this, go ahead with, with Emery &amp; Sons, does K&amp;E have any, say, hold to, right to appeal or anything?
They can file a lawsuit to try to stop the project. They have to do that before the contract is signed. They'd have to argue that we have committed a legal error in rejecting their bid protest.
But it sounds like.
Well, they argued that they did. We don't believe they did. I don't want to be so arrogant as to say that I'm, you know, I can only win. I mean, I, that is a risk. We're confronted with trying to decide how to do this. We are vulnerable to, if we did award the contract, a second low bidder, Emery, could theoretically file a lawsuit to try to stop award based on the, the notion that we had departed from the law. So it's kind of one of those places where you come to the fork in the road and you take it.
Well, the, the whole issue is not whether or not $300,000 and that many million is, whatever it is. The problem is when you set the standard that says, like the Europeans do, I sat in class for X amount of days, therefore I'm golden, versus the standard that our country has used since almost its inception that says, I can build that bridge, and I proved that you can build that bridge, and that's what makes me golden. I think we're using the wrong standards. And it may not be something that we can change, but it is a frustration for me that I recognize how wrong it is. I mean, we had Europe trying to tell us how to, whether or not we could, we could have engineers give a test for, for an engineer, for a welding engineer, because they didn't accept our number of class hours. I mean, it was just that kind of silliness instead of the ability to do the work.
And, and counselor, column, can I clarify? This isn't a pre-qualification. I mean, it's an experience requirement, and so contractors had to actually demonstrate that they installed, I can't remember how much it was, you know, 2,000 feet of HDP pipe greater than 20 inches. So I mean.
And had they never done it?
K&amp;E had never done it.
Yeah, based on the.
Didn't make any difference.
They were subbing that out. So had, had K&amp;E, had K&amp;E listed OXPO as a subcontractor who, given their experience, had done the work, and they, they brought the crew, they brought their own superintendent and their own tech, then we would not be facing this question.
Exactly.
So the error was made not only in filling out the original form, but in the form that they, they chose to respond. So hiring a guy who worked on a crew one time way back when, you know, in my early years, I drove Jammer up in the woods. I wouldn't, I wouldn't begin to tell you that I know how to go out and tell a logging site how, how to operate just because I drove the Jammer. So I think, I think it goes back to what Rich's concern is, but I think it's the fact that they've not demonstrated that they've ever done the work, nor are they hiring a firm who's ever done the work.
Okay, what would you like to do with this item, counsel?
Move adoption of the contract to Emery &amp; Sons?
Second.
Second.
Okay, and any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
No, out of frustration, but we have four.
Okay. Oh, that's right. Bill's not voting on this one. So motion's carried, four to one. Okay, next is an appointment for Jane Donovan to the Arts Commission. This is on page 50.
I would move to approve the appointment.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, next is business from the council, and I would just, instead of going down the dais, if there's anything that's pressing, since we still have a couple items for executive session, anything?
There is an announcement from the county. They have just received the last two proposals for. They have just received the last two proposals for the sales, sales position system at the X.
It was in the newspaper.
In the newspaper.
Well, I just got it this afternoon, the two proposals on, on my email, so.
It was in the newspaper this morning.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Anything, any council have anything else?
We had a wonderful tour out at the new workforce, the new Woodwind Apartments.
Yes.
Some wonderful work they're doing out there.
Yep, oh, it was. I was amazed at those apartments, so just, you know, top-of-the-line granite countertops, and boy, it was pretty nice, though. Okay, Wes, anything? Okay, staff? Staff have anything? Okay, so with that, we will recess to executive session to discuss pending labor negotiations and pending litigation, over litigation likely to be filed in accordance with ORS 192.6602DH. Okay? Okay, folks?